Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Richmond?
She's here.
And Dr. Ward.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. We don't have anyone who needs to participate electronically, and I'm assuming no one's trying to get into our meeting, but can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the work session?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you. I guess we'll kind of need the ladies in the hall to say aye.
You put four here.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Aye.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the information item 3.01, 2022-2023 Report on the Academic Performance. Dr. Schultz, is this yours?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone.
Thank you. This is, this was very interesting. Thank you.
Oh, well, and I also want to take the time to acknowledge Will Massasovik, who's our Division Director of Testing. He was really integral in the preparation of the slides as well.
Okay.
So would be remiss if I didn't at least give him some acknowledgement as well.
Thank you.
But yes, Mr. Bowling and I will be taking us through lots of slides.
Right.
And we'll give you a lot of information about where we stand based on our students' academic performance from last year.
And if we could hold our questions to the end, but if someone feels like we need to interrupt, that's fine too.
And I'll be, as she rolls through it, I'm going to be providing some color commentary to do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowling.
Yeah, that's right. Got to add to it.
Okay. Add the flavor.
Keep it live for you. I'll start off here.
Okay.
So I think what's really important to note, this is what we're going to tell you. So in these bullets will outline what the data will show is that we have had a slow drop off in performance over the last 15 years. So it was well, well prior to the pandemic. And it's quite frankly, even most recently, in alignment with the rest of Virginia. So we've had a long lasting impact to students who were in the school during the pandemic, and we've had really unacceptable levels of performance in some of the reporting categories, certain groups of students, and we have a lot of work to do in those areas. There are some great signs though. As you'll see in the first couple of slides, early literacy, we've made some really significant gains since the pandemic started. So we're back to, back to or improved upon the pre-pandemic levels. And the scores are all slowly increasing towards those pre-pandemic levels and doing quite well. And so I'll take in, and the other pieces of optimism are we've identified areas of need, and those are largely in setting infrastructural expectations for the county and for every teacher and every school and every administrator and every faculty member, including the central office, in our roles in this, and providing supports and resources. And it takes time for infrastructural change to take root and to really turn into flowers. So we have to also be patient at the same time. We've identified those areas and we're moving forward. So as we, I'll look at the early signs. The early signs in the, in the literacy side of things are really looking good because overall you can see that when you're looking at PALS scores, so this is the phonological awareness literacy screener, what you're looking for here are low rates because these are percentage of students that are identified as below a benchmark. So that identifies them as at risk. So you see that in 2021, we had much higher rates, and now we're really, we've been moving very quickly back down to pre-pandemic rates. And when you look even more deeply at this. As you look at the breakdown between kindergarten, first and second grade, you'll see that in kindergarten, in second grade, we are doing way better than pre-pandemic. And in first grade, we're very close to returning to pre-pandemic scores.
Now, is 2020 missing?
Yeah, there were no testing at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so the one, the stat to look at here is at the, the high risk category. So back in 2019, we had a 22.7% of students that were identified as high risk. That grew to 40.7 and then started reducing in 22 to 32%, and now it's down to 23%. And you can see the shifts are happening from the higher risk down to the medium risk levels.
Are those risks defined?
So could you define high risk? How is that identified?
So that is, there is, below benchmark would mean that they are at risk. And then far below the benchmark would be, and I don't have the, the actual metric.
But it's based on those benchmarks.
It is based on the.
That's, that's all I needed.
This breaks it down, if you look at the bottom row of this slide, you'll see that it shows certain student groups and comparisons by grade levels to how each one of those student groups is doing. And you can see we've made significant gains with our students with disabilities. Do you see that on the far right hand side? So pre-pandemic, we were at 69%. Now we're at 56% of the students being identified in grade two. And you can see that that tracks throughout the other grade levels as well. So you have to look at this straight up vertically. So economically disadvantaged students are in the first column. Okay. And I got to stop clicking on the pictures.
Is economically disadvantaged eligible for free and reduced rent, rent?
That's one of the ways that identifies. There are a couple of ways that students get identified as economically disadvantaged. One of them is free or reduced price lunch. And so the big takeaways here is that we have largely returned to those pre-pandemic levels. We are, our high risk kids are, that number is decreasing, and we've had significant increases made with all student groups. And so that's all very encouraging news.
Okay, I'm going to take it from here. We are making.
It's, yeah, the keyboard's not working. It doesn't seem to be connected. I'm not sure. Anyway, sorry.
So moving now into our SO, our Standards of Learning Assessment Performance. This, you're going to see a lot, a lot of slides here, and what we're trying to do is give some context. We have two ways that we are looking at achievement related to the standards of learning. The first is the pass rate, and that's basically a pure pass rate, right? How many students took the test? How many students passed the test? You get a rate, it's a fraction. Combined rate is where things get a little bit more nuanced, and this is affecting our grades three through eight in reading and mathematics. And the way the combined rate is calculated, this is somewhat of a simplified version, but for today's purposes, it will give us a good starting point. It is your pass rate that we just discussed, as well as a growth metric that gets added in. If a student demonstrated growth, it will, that student will now be calculated as having passed in the combined rate methodology. We have a subsequent slide here that will give a little bit more, I guess, a nice little graphic to demonstrate. So here, if you look over on the graphic side, you see that 10 students took this particular assessment. Our six students who are green passed in the pass rate. They passed the test according to the definition of passing that particular assessment. Those four students who are red failed. So our pass rate, using the pass rate methodology would be 60%. You can see though, that one of those red students turned green because that student demonstrated growth. And then another student turned green because that student demonstrated a certain proficiency on the English language assessment. So using the combined rate methodology, we have an 80% pass rate for this particular examination and a 60% pass rate just using our pass rate methods. You'll see this play out as we move through the performance of our students across the different assessments.
When did they put this into place? I can't remember what year.
So we, the.
Two years ago.
We have two years, and you'll see that on the next slide. But if you recall though, from a presentation that I gave earlier this year, the methodology did change in how that combined rate was calculated. So we're making some adjustments with, from the VDOE in terms of how those combined rates are calculated. Okay, so here we're moving through first our.
Not to, but the combined rate was used, is we moved over to that. Why?
So it's basically, the combined rate is what is used for accreditation. The state has determined that this is the methodology that's going to be used for accrediting schools.
So to make sure that we are advancing even our, to make sure that our students are below or falling below the mark, are advancing on some way?
It's giving schools credit for making progress with students, not just saying, did they pass a mark? So it's, it's two metrics combined together. That's why they call it the combined.
All right, let me call a timeout really quick because this is an important juncture in where we are with the state and some of the things that have happened in the legislature. Because now we're talking about three different sets of rules over three years, and we're about to have a fourth set of rules put in place. Last year in the legislature, they passed House Bill 585. And House Bill 585 basically directed the Department of Education to look at the differences between accountability and accreditation. And they are in the process right now of going through the State Board of Education to bifurcate accreditation and accountability. And so the accountability piece will very much focus on, this is the number of kids who took the test, this is the number of kids who passed, flat percentage. The accreditation piece may incorporate some of these other components which may give you a different look at how a school might be performing. The truth is in both, not one or the other, but it's, it's taking both metrics and looking at them together to say, well, yes, this many of our kids passed outright, but this many of our kids, in addition to that, grew a certain percentage that is evidence of instruction or something along those lines.
Do we show both numbers for our schools?
We do.
Like if we wanted to look for our school, do we look at the PALS and then the combined?
Yeah, so on the Virginia School Quality Profiles, you can look at both data points, and we present both data points, and we're doing that here too.
Because I would think it would vary, obviously, with the population of the school.
But this is now going on four consecutive years with four years of the goalposts moving. Thank you, Richmond.
And they're likely to move again.
And they're likely to move again.
But really isn't the bottom line what we're teaching the students, right, here regardless of how they're measuring this? I mean, we're not teaching to the test, are we?
No, but it's, it is one of those questions of like, how are we tracking our progress relative to performance from the previous year? Now, I will say this, it's almost impossible to look at, you know, fourth grade math SOL scores and say, well, how do these kids do in third grade? Because they're measuring different standards, but they're the same group of kids. So you know, you really do have to take like a holistic view of how are we doing year over year at a grade level, and then how are we doing by cohort over time? And are the kids meeting with a certain level of success?
So that actually speaks to a few of the questions I had here when I was looking, reviewing the data, but we can talk about that when you're done. I just was confused. I'm not confused, I just wanted to make sure and clarify, but.
So just to, I do have a clarification question. So that student that turned green for growth, that means that that student still didn't pass the test, but did.
But did that, correct.
Progressed towards passing.
Than their previous year's performance, or based on the WEDA exam, which, which measures how good their, their English proficiency are.
And then so those pass rates that we're looking at, do they include growth? Or are they just straight, you pass the test or not?
So we presented both in the presentation.
Yeah.
So at the, at the top of the slide, if it says pass rate, we're referring to that true pass rate.
Okay.
The number of students who took the test, the number who passed. And then you'll see the top of the slide, the title will change to combined rate.
And the state does not publish a combined rate for the state. They only publish it for the pass rate. So we're going to be comparing pass rates to the state rate, and then we'll come back and show you the combined rates.
So many passes.
Combined rates, we look amazing. Pass rates, we don't look amazing.
Well, but I mean, if you're trying to make claims about test scores years ago, you should be using pass rate.
Correct.
Exactly. That's the apples to apples.
Yes.
So yeah, that was my concern too, but I'll, I'll wait to ask the question, but that's looking at this. I was like, well, that's a nice way to make us look phenomenal, but.
But does a student who passed also get a point for growth? Or if they pass, it's just, it's a pass.
Growth isn't considered if they pass. They don't, we don't think so.
Does the state change the tests in terms of what it takes to pass it?
Yes.
Yes.
All the time.
Up or down? All the time.
It, it depends every year.
Every seven years of standards adoption.
And they know they're changing it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Has no one told them that this is not the way to.
Well, there's some good news. Like the equation of a line is still the equation of a line, y equals mx plus b. Like algebra is still algebra.
Was that algebra?
It is.
Okay.
But so, so some things are not, you know, not necessarily going to change, but maybe the emphasis on certain areas over other areas may change and.
So when the standards change, they have to change the assessments.
Okay.
And so in the, by state law, the standards have to be reviewed and revised every seven years. So therefore, the assessments have to change to make sure that they're match, they're assessing what it is that is in the standards. And so there's always recalibration every seven years, and so you will see these implementation dips from time to time. Not like a pandemic implementation dip. So we'll, we'll get back on track here.
This may be a realistic question, but does the politics have any influence on those, you know, the, the standards and assessments and all that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're never really going to have apples to apples unless you have a teacher that knows the kids.
During the seven years that they're implementing one test, yes, you can compare during those times.
But from one test to another test, it's difficult.
Correct.
Well, then you'd have to be careful the first year versus the third and fourth year, right? Like when they switch.
Teachers get better at teaching things. So it's, it's ideal that scores increase statewide when you implement new standards so that they're showing that.
Over the seven years too?
Yeah, they're learning how to teach the standards better each year because the standards might be new.
I'm sorry for those questions. No, that's a great question. I'm just learning.
Yeah, no, it's good.
And I really appreciate you putting the acronyms up there. The names of the tests.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I couldn't have told you what some of those were.
Well, it helps to know what you're looking at, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we are. We're in mathematics. You can see the top of the slide, we are looking at pass rates. And as Ms. Bowling indicated, the blue and the red bars are denoting our division in blue compared to state performance for all of the years that we have. Obviously, the 2019 and 2020, we have no bars because we did not test in those years. So for grade three mathematics, you can see here that we are relatively close to the state. In 2018, 2019, we of course took a dip, just as everyone else did, and we are increasing over time and approaching state averages. Very similar here in grade four for mathematics. Again, pass rates here. And here we can see grade five math. We have unfortunately been below the, I'm sorry, we are quite, right, we need to celebrate where we can, right? We are above the state average consistently. We are recovering and approaching our pre-pandemic rates here. So now we've switched over here to the combined rate. So you'll notice that the bars have changed. So this, and this slide, and our combined rate slide are, the blue is denoting the 2021, 22 school year, and the red is 22, 23. These are the two years that we have implemented growth. So that is the growth combined rate metric, so that's why we only have the two years to compare. And you can see here that we are relatively consistent in third grade, and we have taken a bit of a dip in grade four and grade five between last year.
So this is a good moment for pause too, because what will likely happen over the next several years as our performance continues to increase, the margin of growth will continue to decrease, and so will our combined score. So, you know, where we were looking really poor before on straight pass rates, that will continue to change and improve if we continue to go on the trajectory that we are. But this trajectory will change a little bit and go down because the growth will be relying less on growth.
Also, a point of notation here is that this might be reflective of the change in how the combined rate was calculated between the two years. In 2021 to 2022, students could demonstrate growth two ways. In a three-year comparison, fall to spring, that student check grew. And also, now that we've shifted over here to 22, 23, we need to note that the only way to demonstrate growth was year to year. So.
So who sets these standards?
The state.
The state.
The State Board of Education.
So while we see a dip, we can't necessarily draw conclusions because the way that the metrics are calculated have changed.
But you look at trends over time, and that's the thing, you got to go, when you, when you have those nuanced changes, you have to look at big picture, right? And so you look at bigger changes over time.
Okay, so we're transitioning here into our middle school students. Again, we've shifted back here to our pass rate.
What's your assessment on where we are in elementary and where we need to be?
I, we have a summary slide.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that in just a second.
Excellent question. Thank you. So here we've transitioned over here to our middle school students in grade six. These are, again, we're looking at pass rate here, not the growth of the combined rate. And you can see that we took a hit quite, quite a bit actually when we came out of the pandemic. But the good news here is that we can see that we're starting to recover, still approaching the state average, but we're, we're making some considerable progress.
Normally, we'd be celebrating a 35-point gain in two years, but when your performance is that low, it's nothing to celebrate.
Grade seven, we see much the same. We are recovering, but not yet back to our 2018, 2019 performance.
But we're very reflective of the state as well.
Yes. And grade eighth mathematics, what we see here is.
So these are the kids that missed a lot of elementary school.
Yep.
And they got.
So they went to middle school.
Yeah, middle school.
And there are other factors here. So for instance.
Four, five.
Four, five, six, yeah.
Students in grade eight, so any student that is taking the algebra exam or the geometry is not in here. So it's not really apples to apples when you're comparing to the state because we have more students taking those courses during the eighth grade year than the state. So on the whole, it's, again, it's a little more difficult. But yeah, we're making progress. We're making some gains.
And here's where we shift into our end of course, is what the EFC stands for. We're looking here at. Yes, thank you, Dr. Taylor, into high school level courses. So this is our Algebra I, but this is specifically focusing on those middle school students that Mr. Bowling was just mentioning. So these are our seventh and eighth graders who are taking Algebra I, Standard of Learning Assessment. You can see in the 2018, 2019 school year, we had a 97% pass rate, and we are steadily trying, making some progress towards approaching that. We do not have a state comparison because the way that the state reports is only looking at the end of course as a whole. So that would include high school students. We don't have the ability to parse that out at the state level, so we're, we only have the blue bar on this graph.
And these are students that were in third and fourth grade during, at the beginning of the pandemic, and so keep that in mind. They're even some of our higher flyer students typically that are taking algebra in the middle school are also affected by the pandemic and the results of the pandemic, and they are. I'm getting a little bit of additional commentary here. You'll see that we've now added, when we get into the high school test, we started adding N counts, and that's the number of students taking these tests, because you will see N counts vary greatly, which in, and we'll, we'll talk about, well, Amanda will talk about that as well as, as we go on.
When did we stop doing English and math every day in middle school? What?
2020. The day of the, of year of the pandemic.
Yeah, the year of the pandemic. So in 1819, we were having it every day.
Yes. And 1920, before we closed, it was the everyday schedule.
So that might have.
That might have.
Some.
Okay, and this is presenting the combined rate now. So the two blue bars represent years, and this is for the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, eighth grade math assessments. Okay, now we're looking at that same Algebra I SOL assessment, but this time focusing just on the high school takers. So these would be students who are enrolled in high school taking their end of course Algebra I assessment. You can see we were at 67% of a pass rate in the 2018, 2019 school year, and we are approaching that once again in this most recent school year.
So middle schoolers were doing significantly better in 1819 than the high schoolers.
Right? But those are what, those are different cohorts.
Yeah, there's a, so a middle schooler that takes it maybe, we're in high school, you know, all students taking it.
Right, they had it every day. High school students did not.
But the ones that already passed it weren't, aren't in here.
That's true.
So that's going to, that's going to have an impact on that too, just like the, the other one, not, not taking the SOL.
But if you put all of the students together, you can see in here, here's pass rates for all students taking Algebra I, including the seventh, eighth, and ninth, 10th graders.
Is that what this one is? That's the one that's up right now? That's all?
That's all.
All takers.
The totality of, okay. So we're about 11% below where we had been.
And now we are moving into our end of course geometry students, our, the geometry assessment, excuse me. You can see that we are, we were very close, we, again, the blue now, since we've switched back to pass rate here from the prior slide, the blue is the division, our division, and then the red is the state. So it's a 2018, 2019 school year. We were very close to the state level, and we are steadily making some improvement, had a bit of a dip from the 2021, 2022 school year to 2022, 2023.
But it's really important here to look at the N counts. It's because the state changed the rules. So back in 2018, 19, anyone who took the geometry class took the exam. And then starting in 1920, which we didn't have testing at that time, but then, okay, let's go to 2021, it is only a student, so they reduced the number of required verified credits to graduate down from two, or I'm sorry, yeah, two in mathematics for a standard diploma, I, for an advanced studies diploma, down to one. So now they didn't have to, and they said, if you, if you've already previously passed and met your state requirement for verification, you don't have to take any more tests. So that, so comparing an N count of 2109 to 847 is really not apples to apples again. You just got to be very careful.
So let's unpack that a little bit. The good news. The good news is we reduced the number of tests that are required at high school. So the state did that. That was a positive thing. However, one of the unintended consequences is that the kids that continue to test were the ones that her historically have been unsuccessful at passing tests.
Right.
So it is the cohort of kids that have struggled.
And they're taking another one.
And so they take another one.
So this, this is my consonant argument with data though, the way it's presented as well, is there's so many factors missing.
That's why we're showing the N counts on these. Because look at the next one. It's even more drastic of a drop.
Yeah, it's crazy. Yeah.
1300 to 300.
And I'm that parent that opts my kid out of every SOL that I can because it gives them testing anxiety. And my kid who failed the SOL ended up passing calculus, AP calculus at 14 years old at Brooklyn, but she failed her SOL. Like some kids just can't take tests, right? So your parent opts you out, not to mess up the data, but so that I don't have to stay up with you all night crying.
Okay, so some of the big key takeaways are that we're very similar to the state, but increases from year to year in grades three, three, five. In grade six, we're definitely below the state, but we're closing gaps. And again, we're seeing increases from year to year in grade six and grade seven. Grade eight, you know, still we're, we are below, but those are different populations of students as compared to the state. So keep that in mind. As we move into the high school test, we're similar to the state again, a little stagnant and significantly fewer takers in geometry and algebra two. And so we just as a note, the small N factor does have a huge impact on scores overall pass rates.
Does the kids taking the test or ones that don't have the test requirements completed or having? But we still want those children to pass the test.
Yes, of course. And the performance is not, and that's what we do.
By any stretch, yeah.
But taking a test is often, some students just don't test well.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, shifting over into our reading data, we've taken a similar approach, comparing our pass rates and our combined rates, presenting both for you. pass rates and our combined rates, presenting both for you. So this is focusing solely on grade three reading scores over the past five years, obviously twenty nineteen, twenty twenty are missing, that was our COVID year. This is comparing our performance in the blue bar to the state average in the red bar.
Can I ask what connection there is between the PALS and the reading tests? Do they correlate? Do they?
They're not measuring the same things now. So one is a, is a literacy awareness, like phonological awareness.
Can I also add, I mean, there's the PALS, there's the S O L, and there's the MAPS. So like, are any of them similar to each other?
I just, I just wanted to know what it means. Like, we have kids, you know, we got fifty-seven percent of kids in second grade in twenty twenty-one not passing the phonological benchmark.
Identified as that.
Does that, does that map onto?
There are three different tests testing three different things. So PALS is, is helpful to us, even though they are going through a bit of an overhaul themselves, surprise, surprise.
Next year it'll be called VALS.
VALS.
VALS?
Yeah.
Are they in A E I O U?
No, no, it's in V A L S.
I'm saying that makes them feel like they're wrong.
And sometimes.
Virginia.
Virginia. Yeah. So what they're, what they are assessing are early literacy building block skills, things like concept of word, phonological awareness, things of that, that nature versus some of these tests are more targeted towards reading comprehension, decoding, some of those things, context clues. So they're, they're assessing different things, but candidly, PALS is a good indicator of future performance and is a bit of a predictor for us because those are the building block skills that contribute to, to strong reading skills. So it, it, even though they're measuring different things, they are, they are the age appropriate right things to be measuring. Measures of academic progress is a little bit different. You're measuring point to point growth in terms of their skill development. It looks and feels a little bit more like an S O L in terms of the content is age and, and skill level appropriate, but what it is assessing is how much you're growing because it's a computer adaptive assessment. If you answer a question incorrectly, you get an easier question until you start answering questions correctly and you establish a line that is a best fit for your performance. But if you continue to answer questions correctly, you get harder questions and it challenges you more to create yet a different line of best fit for your performance.
Which test is this?
That's the measures of academic progress.
As opposed to the S O L?
Yeah.
But aren't those tests more effective in helping target where students need additional?
Yeah, so that's the rub, is that the S O L tests are a great snapshot of performance of where you are that day, at that moment, at that time. Measures of academic progress are a much clearer view of how we are, our kids are doing overall. There is some talk at the state level of abandoning the S O L growth system because we have kids taking S O L in the fall, taking S O L in the winter, and then taking S O L in the spring to create that line of best fit and instead using an off the shelf growth measure like MAP instead. It would be to our advantage, it's something we would endorse, it's something that I think a lot of educators would endorse, but of course policymakers would have to find a way to fund it versus having localities fund it.
So wouldn't, I mean, I guess I get confused. Wouldn't this actually help if, if these cohorts were actually graduating class based, right? Like, over time, so we could actually see if we're having any impact on those kids as they're going through the system? So for me, this is, this is fine for how we're doing at, but these are, so these are such different kids. We're not actually looking at the kids that we're educating over time. We are, but we're not doing it side by side, if that makes sense. So if this was like, hey, this is the class of twenty twenty-seven, this is how they did kindergarten, first grade, second grade, we're seeing some market improvements with, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I just, I have.
This would dangerously sound like a compliment, so I'm gonna tiptoe with this. But the, the state has invested in a system called B V O S where they are trying to collect longitudinal data on student performance to give both schools, divisions, and parents a snapshot of their kids' performance over time. If that got, if that actually was executed by the way that they envisioned it, it would be a very helpful tool to us.
I, I think it would go in the fire as well.
It provides some projections of.
Yes, predictive analytics.
Yeah.
Really helpful to us.
To which you can compare to the actual and find out where interventions might be necessary. And MAP does a lot of that. So our teachers do a great job of using the MAP results in schools to identify students for certain interventions necessary and to say, these students, we need to provide additional supports for them, or they may need an additional class or, or a resource.
Would achieve less testing. Would be a great.
There's a balance between, you know, testing and instructional time.
It's a burn. We included our assessment calendars.
Oh my gosh.
There's like, literally like a handful of days that we're not doing something.
But even to see the hours, the hours for the students to be tested, but then the hours that you have to, that aren't listed there is the time that teachers are taking to do these things. And so a kind of a comment that was made, and I'm just curious how, if it fits, is that MAP testing has been a very helpful predictor for S O L performance.
I would say so.
It has the ability to do so, yeah. Yes. It's one of the things that, that MAP provides.
Cause I know that the middle school science teachers are, are, have not been using it or starting to use it, and many are wanting so that they can get better at their science predictors as well.
They're somewhat, they're quite different tests though. So, so there is a correlation. It's not necessarily causation, but it's, it's there.
For content more than.
So the S O L tests are criterion reference tests and the MAP assessment is a growth assessment that's based on skill, skill development. So.
Okay.
Does every locality use MAPs?
No. And there's a, there's, I will say the majority of the districts in Virginia do.
Well, that's what I meant in Virginia, because when you said that the state would have to pay for it, I'm like, well, we're already all paying for it anyway. Like, does it?
Let us get rid of S O Ls and they pay for that.
And we would recommend that.
Yeah, they can swap one thing.
That is the kind of advocacy that we would recommend.
Yes.
All right, we'll go look at these.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta.
Okay, this is already answered most of my questions.
We're seeing very similar trends and you'll notice in our takeaway slide, our key takeaway slide. We've noticed similar trends here for the, the elementary grades that we are not where we were pre-pandemic, but we are making progress and we are approaching the state. Combined rate again, we've shifted here, so the blue is the year, last, not the most pre, recent year, but the year before, and then compared to our, the year that we just ended, twenty twenty-three, you can see that we've made some, a little bit of a decline in our fifth grade reading, slight drop in our fourth grade.
And again, remember that there were changes in how growth was measured.
Exactly.
So.
Okay, so now shifting to middle school.
Back to pass rates.
Pass rates, so our blue is us and the red is comparing us to the rest of the state. You can see it's very similar pattern as the other assessments. Seventh grade reading here, pass rate. And eighth grade reading. Shifting back to the combined rate for the middle school years, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So this is looking at the year over year comparison, just for us. Moving into high school, end of course for reading, we're shifting to pass rate here, so the blue is us, the red is the state.
So go back, Amanda, this is somewhat encouraging that our kids can be, can reasonably pass a basic literacy test and that they're relatively unfazed. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now that the rigor of this assessment is not anything to get really excited about.
Cause this isn't even a state test, is it?
No, this is a state test. This is the S O L, but, but this, this is a lot of high school students.
All of them?
Yes.
They want, they take it once.
They take it once. So that's goodish news. If it was a little bit more of a rigorous assessment, we probably would know more about our, our kids and their performance, but are they basically literate? Yes. Beyond that, doesn't really tell us a whole lot, honestly.
We won't take that one.
Okay, so the key takeaway is there that, you know, we're very similar to the state in grades three, three, five, and six, three, six through eight. It's just largely consistent year, year to year, but we're in the three, five, we are making some gains year over year. And with E O C, it's, the high school test is, is slightly higher than the state and it's still largely consistent from year to year.
Moving to our writing assessment, so we have two. One is conducted in eighth grade. These are our pass rates, so our blue is, is us, red is the state. You can see that we have declined from our pre-pandemic rates.
Rates are not.
But the state is also declined.
But our percentage down looks about the same from three and twenty-two, twenty-three.
And this test is no longer being done this year?
This is the last year.
This is the last year.
Yes, so there's changes that'll be made for starting next year.
So is this the writing S O L or is this the work? This is the writing S O L. So where it's fifty-one percent last year.
So there's a couple of really alarming things to note here. The first alarming thing is that a few years ago, the state did take away in an effort to reduce the number of assessments, their most troublesome assessment. Their most troublesome assessment in terms of cost, okay, was grading the writing S O L. And doing that at the fifth grade level, they took that away. Guess which one is going next?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade writing S O L. So there's not really an accountability metric at each level to see how your kids are doing. It's, it's really all on the localities to know whether or not your kids are writing. We've got this carved away as like a, its own separate subject at the, at the retreat to do a deep dive into writing, but we see this as a, as a bit problematic. And the next slide is even gonna show you how really problematic it is because of some policy decisions that were made a couple of years ago. So yay, we're amazing.
We're not.
We're not.
No ceiling.
Yeah. This is the exact opposite of amazing because we switched from taking the rigorous state assessment to an alternate assessment that was easier for our students to pass. The good news is everybody passes it. The bad news is.
It's amazing that everybody passes. I can't, I can't imagine a test that everybody would pass.
Maybe when you did write your name.
This test is not very difficult.
Put their name on it.
To. This, this test is not very difficult.
Can't be much of a test. No.
Maybe your initial. Or we have amazing writing teachers at high school.
Yeah, we don't. Well, we do have two amazing teachers.
Yo, you can't report it.
We, we, we don't have amazing writing going on, I can tell you that. We got a long way to go with writing, but this is not, this is not really telling us anything. This doesn't give us the information that we really need to know in terms of our performance relative to the state, but really, can our kids write? And we know that this is something that employers have asked for us to work on specifically. Colleges have even communicated to us that this is an area.
It's huge at college, it's huge at university.
For us to focus on and we're not there.
And it's true, they can't even write emails, it's.
So.
Yeah, so we're making a policy change here and going to be administering the, the state assessment beginning of this next year, right? Starting next year.
So there is a state assessment still? You said the eighth grade was put away.
Yes, but not me, E O C.
I kind of misspoke about the eighth grade and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. So it's actually being integrated into a component of the reading.
So it's called the Integrated Reading and Writing Assessment and it comes in two parts.
How's that different than what it is right now?
Now it's just reading and just writing, two different things.
It won't be as long. And I'll give you an example. The writing assessment historically has even been administered over two days, a multiple choice section where students are doing sentence perfection and, and word choice and some other things, and then a writing sample, which is its own day.
Yeah.
They are integrating those components into the reading assessment to be administered into two parts versus effectively over three parts.
Okay, oh, okay. And will this be, cause the current writing is done usually in March? And is this gonna be done end, literally end of this new combined test? Will it be done at the end of the year or will they do it?
It's in the spring.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're, not in the spring, but after this year, we're gonna be moving back to the state test. I think that the original plan.
Yeah, that's not what she's asking. She's like, will the new combined test in eighth grade be in May or in?
March.
March.
Oh, it's in March, yeah. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. The integrated reading and writing would be in May and later in the window, so in the.
Okay, so we've shifted back to combined rates for this, and so this is last, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two compared to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Relatively the same.
Relatively the same, relatively consistent, yes.
And so as you might guess, we are slightly below the state in grade eight. We're, and with the E O C, the high school test, we're significantly above the state. And the change in the assessment, just be ready that we are going to see a shift in those scores when we implement a new assessment.
Highly unlikely to be a hundred percent.
Who needs a science? I can't imagine a test where I get a hundred percent.
You're outside the linear range.
The whole paper get a hundred percent.
That was the goal of No Child Left Behind.
This is actually the magic year.
That was what was supposed to happen.
Two thousand twenty-three.
Everybody was supposed to be, was supposed to pass.
The goal, but.
It was supposed to be done this year.
So continuing our walkthrough, the S O L assessments, we've moved into science. This is our pass rates, so division versus state presented here. As, as with the other assessments, you see that we took quite a dip after emerging from COVID, but you can see we're on the road to recovery here and, and approaching state levels. Same, similar pattern with science, not quite as dramatic, actually, similar pattern with eighth grade science, not quite as dramatic of, of a drop, but we are still on the road to recovery coming out of COVID.
And not quite as a dramatic increase either.
That's a good point, very good point.
So it's more stagnant.
And this is our, and of course, high school earth science comparisons. We do have the N counts below, just to provide some context when you are comparing the, the division to the state over the years.
And have these tests changed since twenty eighteen?
No, this has not had an adoption, I think, fifteen or sixteen.
I have to look into that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So we have some work to do.
Yep.
And of course biology, high school biology, consistent with the state coming out of the pandemic.
Chemistry. Thirty-five students to chemistry, thirty-five. Those are pretty low.
Biology, we're about to pre-pandemic.
And then what you call the biology.
It's similar to the.
Ten thousand high school students.
And this, yeah, and the, the state requires everyone to take the biology assessment for, to meet federal requirements. So that's another key. So that's, you know, that rule about once you verify the credit, you don't have to take the next test? If they took earth science before biology, they have to take both tests because the state does require biology as well. Now, you, you noted the steep, steep drop off in the, the N counts here for the chemistry assessment.
Like, it's almost to the point, it's so low, like you can't.
You almost don't wanna.
But you look at twenty-one, twenty-two versus twenty-two, twenty-three, I mean, that's a similar N and yet quite, quite a dip there.
Yes, but we're comparing thirty-five students to forty-five, so we do just have to be cautious and we're trying to.
How many are taking the course though? This is how many took the test, right?
About two thousand kids.
Two thousand kids.
So two thousand took the course.
But they don't have to. The other ones that didn't pass biology on that, right?
Yeah, so this is sixty-four percent of the kids who are not historically successful on science S O Ls, you know, past science S O L. Very incongruent.
Okay, and I think we just described the key takeaways for science and we can move right on to history and special science.
So Virginia Studies, this is what our fourth graders are taking, this is their pass rates. Looking here for, across the five years, comparing the division to the state, we are making some recovery, coming back to, approaching our, getting closer to our pre-pandemic levels.
The test isn't the same test they took in two thousand eighteen and nineteen anywhere, right?
No, I think that this actually remained, doesn't it? The standards changed, but the assessment didn't.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, political.
Yeah, there were some political changes.
Seventh grade, social studies assessment is civics and economics, these are our pass rates, making some progress towards recovery coming out of the pandemic. This is our high school, end of course, world geography.
But look at the N counts. So we almost shouldn't even report these.
Yes, with Ns this low, we really have to be cautious during any kind of collusion. It's a good visual track, but interpret with caution.
One child could jump you ten percent.
Honestly, like.
Okay, so.
Moving on to our end of course world history one students. This is again a pass rate, so we're looking at us compared to the state, making progress towards recovery. And we are outperforming the state on this particular assessment. World history two, you'll note the dramatic decrease in the number of test takers, again reflecting those changes in the requirements for the diploma. And we see here that we are relatively consistent with the state, but we have had some considerable declines.
What happened in twenty-two, twenty-three that both the state and the division drop off so much?
So it's the rule change in the number of verified credits that somebody needs to take.
But I mean, I'm just saying it's a similar number of students in both 2021 and 2022. Well, not, you have more, right? So, yeah.
And so you did, that is literally the change in rules. And so here's the juxtaposition that the high school testing coordinators are in. You need a verified credit in ELA for reading and then one in writing. You need one in math, one in science, one in social studies, and then another one. Okay, well, what's the other one? Well, maybe it's social studies, maybe it's the extra science. And so do you give them just one? Do you let them pick? Or do you give them both tests and see which one they pass? Will you give them both tests and see which one they pass? And so if they are aware that they passed one and not the other, their incentive to.
Oh, you mean they know they passed one, but when they go take the second, they're just like, let me take a nap.
Yeah, goddesses always.
So.
Do we still have the policy that if you pass the SOL, you don't have to take the exam? Where we don't have exams?
We don't have any.
We don't have exams. See, that was a big incentive in the past, these kids on the SOLs.
It was.
Well, and keep.
We had a lot of conflict about it.
Keep in mind too, the state also discourages you from overtesting now. And they don't want you to administer more tests that they have to pay to grade if you have already met your graduation requirements for verified credits. So they actually actively would dissuade us from returning to a policy similar to that because it would lead to overtesting.
Okay, we've moved on here to another high school assessment, the Virginia and US history. You can see that we are outperforming the state and relatively consistent coming out of the pandemic. But difference of the N actors here.
And so, you know, we are slightly below the state largely and then we're making increases from year to year. So it's a very consistent message that we're sending. And the high school test, actually, we are performing above the state here.
Okay, so this is kind of an all encompassing slide, looking specifically at the combined rates. And so these are the subject areas in total for all students.
So we jump to all grades.
For all grades, all assessments tied to the different subjects at the bottom, comparing two years' worth of data because of the two years that we have available to us for the combined rate methodology.
So, you know, all in all, we're doing about the same as the state, you know, I mean, in a nutshell there. And then we're back to the slide as a repeat, just to say, hey, we have, and we recognize that there are significant issues that need to be addressed and we are addressing them. And so we're going to look at a couple of other pieces of data here. So we'll jump into here.
So this is the MAP test that we mentioned earlier. This is the academic progress. That's what the MAP stands for. So why are we assessing, why are we implementing this assessment? We're trying to ask the questions, are the children learning? Are they learning at a rate that's consistent with one year's worth of growth? And it also enables us to identify students for support, in particular, student populations. Okay, so here's our mathematics slide. This is for the percent.
Can we take a quick pause, real quick, go back? I think that this is also another additive benefit that I think a lot of people overlook. This is a great tool to identify students for disabilities or students who are gifted. And this is one measure that like you pop quickly, one way or another, when a student takes this assessment, it's a great early identification tool for both. Sorry.
Okay, so this slide is showing us the percent of students that met growth goals identified by.
But we're not doing great here.
No.
Actually, this is pretty good. This is pretty good.
We're okay with less than fifty percent of students meeting their growth goal if they're black and African American?
So, so keep in mind that they're not, this is not like a hundred percent equals good. But if you're north of fifty, this is a mathematic calculation that is going to be different for every single student.
And these are taken three times a year.
Correct. So this is, are you line of best fit? So really, the right score here is fifty. We almost want to get fifty because it means that you are, you are where you are supposed to be going, that the majority of your kids are within that range of line of best fit. So we don't freak out so much when it gets north of fifty. We do freak out a little bit when it gets below fifty because what we do want is kids that are within that range of the line of best fit. So this is not bad.
So I don't understand the calling it met growth goals.
Yeah.
So like, are we saying that?
It doesn't mean that they didn't grow.
Okay.
And so here's what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that you're close to a hundred percent of kids that are growing. But did they grow enough? Okay, at least fifty-three percent of all students in two thousand one to two thousand two grew enough compared to their individual growth goal. So it's hard to kind of get your head wrapped around because it's very individualized to the student because a gifted student may have a growth goal that's very different than a student who is just accessing general education services.
Well, so do we have gifted as one of the groups here? No?
No, but we could break that out and it would be interesting.
Why would we want fifty percent to be, you know, what we're looking for? And that, that.
Just as an indicator.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me because wouldn't we want a higher percentage?
Of course, perfect, yeah.
To meet their growth goals. And I mean, if only fifty percent meet it, to me, that's not enough.
Keep in mind that the growth goals are individualized to the specific student.
Because sometimes the student's growth goal is very miniscule.
Yes, it's very small.
And I only remember this because when Stafford started doing it, or I just remember my kids' teachers, when I had four, and going to those meetings, they loved the map. But it was different for each different kid. And some had big growth goals and some had very, very small, right? So there's a, has that happened?
Yeah, so we're not freaking out if somebody misses the mark.
But it bothers me that we only were satisfied as half needed, whether it's big or little.
Oh, no, we're not satisfied.
I thought you said that's what we're looking for.
So, so I went though.
The fifty percent.
My ear here.
Our alarms don't go off as dramatically. Like this is not something to, for us that we are like, oh my gosh, the sky is falling. If this was like ten percent across the board and none of our kids were seeing any kind of growth whatsoever, we would be very concerned. Or we would say, what's wrong with the statistical model that's predicting a growth goal that kids can't meet?
Right.
That would be the question that this would beg. I would not look at this data in terms of like a pass rate. No, that's not the way to look at this data.
But for us, it's a pass rate. If we're trying to get these students to meet these goals, isn't it, isn't it a test for us as the educators to get them to meet these growth goals? And so if we have fifty percent that meet it, that means fifty percent aren't meeting it.
But it doesn't mean that fifty percent aren't growing.
Correct.
They're still growing in their knowledge, they're just not where this data said last year they're supposed to be.
But we are the ones that set the goals, though.
No, we do not. Actually, we do not.
Who sets the goals?
It is a statistical analysis of forecasting their performance based on past performance.
So last year, my, 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 her growth goal was huge, right? She grew literally a grade and a half in a few months, but she still wasn't at where the thing said she's supposed to be. Like it just, it doesn't make sense, but it makes sense a little bit to me.
And also it helps determine where issues are so that education can be more targeted to what a kid may need.
That's the magic.
So the real challenge for teachers, I think, is in using this data and then applying it to each individual student. So I'm not.
So if a kid bombs this assessment, that's not necessarily a terrible thing because it will pinpoint the areas that need to be targeted for attention. Like that's the benefit. So it's not necessarily a bad thing for not achieving.
So what you're saying is you're sort of moving away from a system that does sort of label a kid one way or the other in SOL, which targets them at time wise, and doesn't really give us a way to move that child forward. Versus a test that actually tells us where there's some holes. Maybe we didn't map their goals right or whatever, or maybe we're not getting them correctly.
Test response to each individually.
So if they get a question right, the next question's harder. Can we say it was more attainable, less attainable or not? We can do that. The teacher can do that, I mean.
Yes.
And we can meet with them.
It gives you so much information.
It's like the average. Yeah, no, I, I see it. So some kids are going to be, some goals are going to be.
Like I feel like I'm an educator and I walk out of it precise.
So it's, so, so you're thinking about it as a, so let's say you need a range.
I love it. What the, the question is where we're looking at numbers here.
You want, you want the range to fall between the growth things, right?
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to have a math. It's really difficult to understand this. I read a book about it last year. Because I think, so how do we, how does that balance?
I was going to, I can't, I can't.
My question is, that would be how you.
And that's good conversation now.
Yeah.
Can we, can we keep going?
Yeah.
I don't want us to run out of our rest for.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, this year, you notice there's only one bar. And that is because we transitioned this past school year to using MAP for literacy, whereas prior we were using MAP in mathematics, but a different assessment in literacy. So it's the same growth goal percent for literacy for grades two through five. And we present our reading for our grade six through eight.
So any reason why it's like forty-nine, fifty-five, fifty-nine? Like why more people in eighth grade meet their growth goals than sixth grade?
I mean, there are different cohorts of students. And you have to remember the eighth graders and this year, they were, what grade were they in? They were in the fourth grade. So they were majorly impacted by COVID. That has to be a factor. To what degree, I don't know.
So they may have had greater growth because they've had more.
They've had.
Because they were lower.
That's a, that's a potential explanation.
Yet again, like a higher score, not necessarily a great thing per se.
It means twenty percent more of the students in the eighth grade met it than students in the sixth grade, right?
Maybe.
Isn't that what that says?
But what we're saying is the growth goals may have been higher first grade six than for grade eight because grade six may be just generally doing better, which is a weird, no, I got it to.
See, and I, I get that, but if a growth goal is a growth goal is a growth goal. If, you know, for, and if they're different for every student.
I think there's a transition to middle school of being like the executive functioning portion of it is also a factor. The kids, and you know, that was one of my questions.
When they're responding now for six, eight classes.
Right, if even in a normal, you know, normal kids who didn't have a pandemic impact, I think you're going to find them like struggling with the.
So it's good to, by the time you get to eighth grade, they're more meeting their goals. Be more of our needs, fewer meeting their growth goals. Two years later, I guess.
They're better at being.
They get the hang of being in middle school.
Right, right.
And graders, they've got the hang of middle school. Okay, so transitioning here to our advanced placement data, as these are obviously our high school students. So what we presented for you here is the same five-year comparison. We did have students who took advanced placement exams in the 2019, 2020 school year. So you see that bar represented. Yeah, many, thirty-four hundred of them, actually.
And the college board shifted to an online assessment that year.
It's about a third of our high school students.
Well, some of them are taking more than one.
But this also includes the eighth, the seventh, the eighth.
It's not unduplicated.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
They can be, they can take, right?
There's no AP.
Oh, that's right, there's no APs.
These are just advanced placements, so these are available to high school students.
But we could, we will come up with an unduplicated number for you too, to show at some point.
Okay, so this is looking at the students who achieved a score. Remember, it's a five-point score system for an advanced placement test. So a three, four, or a five, which are, the three is generally the minimum score that would be accepted by a college or university. So we're presenting that for you here. These are percents, not the N count. You can see the number of tests, the students that are represented by that rate at the bottom.
So this is a good thing.
Yeah.
So, you know, overall, where the number of student exam takers are returning to pre-pandemic levels and the percentage scoring three or higher has increased over the last year on the majority of exams. And we do have a breakdown that we printed for you in your packet that looks like this. And this shows the numbers by test and by score.
You know, it's interesting if you look at it by school because some of our schools offer more APs.
That is true.
That is very true.
Yeah, and.
This was a ton of work.
Okay, so we have identified a number of issues, right? And so, and we also talked about kind of the infrastructural pieces that we're putting into place to address some of these identified and recognized needs. And so what I wanted to do is walk through just what we're doing specifically to support schools. So there are two different sections you're going to find in here. One is division level initiatives and supports, and then there's going to be school level. And so the first, we're talking, we've redeveloped and our executive directors for school leadership have redeveloped the school improvement planning process and to really identify and strategically target these achievement gaps and issues. And those are shared publicly, there's quarterly reviews now. So we're implementing, you know, what they say is, you know, what is inspected, you have to inspect what you expect, right? And so we are doing that. And so we meet with principals on a quarterly basis to review their progress, to meet their goals on their school improvement plans. We're also, we've established, this is new for Stafford, is division expectations for consistency in things like curriculum delivery, meaning everyone has to teach the Stafford curriculum, which is based on the standards of learning, and the pacing of that curriculum. And then also discipline procedures and attendance expectations. And you all have talked a great deal about, you know, attendance and discipline and we're going to talk about it a little bit more in the next presentation. But, and we've gone through each one of our instructional policies. We've revised over twenty-five of them with policies and regulations. And that's to improve our practices and compliance with state regulations. Also at the division level, we've developed some infrastructural documents and we did provide copies of those to you in your packet. That the framework for student learning, which is identifying the key elements of what it takes for us to, for all students to learn and to improve their achievement. And it maps it out as to say, what is the responsibility of the school division to make that happen? What is the responsibility of the school administrator? What is the role of the teacher? And what is the role of the student in making expectations rise higher?
Do you have the role of the parent?
We do not have that in that document.
Because I think that'll help with attendance.
Well, I think there's a lot of things that could actually help.
Maybe, maybe the next version.
Maybe so, yeah, absolutely.
Parents' rights and responsibilities document.
Right, in addition, we've now established an essential components of effective lessons that was lacking. It's just the basics of what do we expect to see in terms of planning for instruction in classrooms throughout the division? And this is something that kind of, it really differed depending upon the school. And we felt like there needs to be infrastructural expectations when it came to what's, what makes an effective lesson. We've developed a plan for training school-based coaches to better support the teachers. And so we're implementing that now because school principals have a number of resources at their, at their, you know, beck and call. But it's making sure that they're all speaking with the same language and making sure that they're coaching teachers together instead of individually. And so we're looking for collective expectations there to really kind of get the vocabulary focused and the approach focused and helping the principals be more strategic as leaders with their resources, their human resources in the building. Again, we have improved collaboration between departments, especially in with addressing the needs of kids with disabilities and English learners. And that includes staffing and professional learning. And so you'll see there that there's been increased staffing standards that you all approved that really provided greater levels of support division-wide for those students. In addition, we're giving administrators more and better data to look at that will allow them to make better instructional decisions, not just instruction, but also attendance and discipline. And we're doing that through the rollout of the Click dashboard. And you will mention that again in the next presentation as well. You know, data informs practice and so we want to keep the focus on that. We've also revised the standards-based grading system for elementary, for the elementary level and implemented expectations by quarter for teachers to make sure that they're implementing what's being assessed and then reported through the grade reports. We're also implementing this multi-tier system of supports for all students. And so that is in the beginning stages and we will be really fully on board next year. And that will help align resources and interventions for identified groups of students. In addition, we were looking at, we've revised our division level curricula for every content area and created. and created blueprint courses for over thirty-five courses in the secondary area. Meaning, these are template courses that a new teacher can, and, and they're, they're developed in Canvas. So they can take this, it includes model lessons and pieces that if they're a brand-new teacher or they, or they're teaching something for the first time, like a math teacher, you know, you can teach a myriad of different courses. But if you've never created a statistics course, it's nice to have something to start with. Back in the old, olden days, it used to be people passed notebooks that had things that you could copy and things, activities you could do with kids. Now they're in Canvas.
I have a non-teacher question.
Okay.
So does this, um, does this impact their planning period? I always hear teachers talk about that, like, does this, um, do they spend less time planning? Because you have this model thing, well, some teachers, like maybe the newer ones?
Well, I mean, just like with anything, if, 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 if you were a teacher and you handed me a lesson plan to teach, we'll say, line of best fit in, in mathematics, I might have to modify your lesson plan because you developed it, it's how you think. And so teachers take lesson plans that others create, and they say, I like that, I like that component, but I don't really like this, and that's not really my approach, or my kids don't need that, or because they're already going on that. But, so, um, you know, the whole point for, for this bullet is saying, we're doing tremendous amounts of curriculum resource development and also revision to make things better. And then we have implementation of two new sets of standard, well, three new sets of standards, mathematics, science, and history, which have, are, are going into play this and next year.
Is that middle school as well, science and history, or is that just?
Yeah, K-12. Uh, the history, we're not exactly sure about the implementation. The state has, has, has been very slow rolling on an actual timeline of implementation. They adopted new standards, they just haven't adopted the official implementation timeline. So we've provided a hundred and sixty-five teachers and growing in grades K through three with letters training, which is evidence-based literacy instruction training as required through the Literacy Act. The letters, the specific type of training is not required by the state, but it is in line with the requirements of the state for the Virginia Literacy Act. And that is a substantial investment, and it's paying off, as you saw in the early literacy numbers. So, so we're doing very well there. And then redevelopment of the middle school schedule, of course, to include instructional time in English and Language Arts and also mathematics daily. And I mentioned this before, the course blueprints for thirty-nine middle and high school courses. And we're ever-expanding that number and the resources within each of those thirty-nine as well, improving it each year. And so then, finally, I, I believe finally, I can't quite remember, it's, there's a lot in here, providing access and training to, to every school and Mastery Connect. And so that's a database of assessment items that for the first time this year, we purchased it for all schools. And so we're implementing that and looking at how we can improve our assessment database to help teachers create common formative assessments to, to better gauge how their learners are doing each and every day. And so, and that was moved into the school level, sorry. And then we provided a lot of professional learning on a number of areas. But we provide, my team provides a lot of technical support and kind of real-time professional learning to school administration and staff on whatever area of need that they have when it comes to academics. And so we deploy our people every single day. You'll rarely see our people in the building. They're in, in schools, working with teachers, working with administrators, and providing that, that, that support that everyone needs. And then our professional learning team has been providing a lot of professional learning in, in many different areas. But we're addressing the needs as they come and as we see them and identify them through the data. We're also launching a writing plan, and so it is in the launch phase right now. It says this winter, we've already started the, the process of development. And, and you see, it's a three-year plan. I believe that you all have, it's in the retreat packet. Oh, sorry. So, so you're going to be diving a little deeper into that during the retreat. But just note it's there to, to address the, the significant issue that we have with writing. And, and by the way, I can't tell you enough that it's not just a Stafford problem. It's a statewide problem, and it's actually a national problem.
Well, it's not new either. I mean, I had students at university.
Yep, absolutely. So there you have it. We'll, we'll wrap up that section. That was not a short presentation. Hope you guys are all right.
Yeah. So, and, and looking at time here, we need about fifteen minutes for our closed session. So we've been asking questions along the way. Is there anything that anyone else needs to?
This is a lot of information to process. Maybe it would be better to wait till after the retreat, then if we could just have maybe fifteen minutes in a work session.
On a work session in, in December?
You've got space in December.
Or maybe we can, maybe we can send air questions in writing, and then we can share all the responses.
There's a ton of data here.
And then if we need to meet, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's, that'll save time.
All right. Thank you. This has been huge and helpful, just, that's a lot, a lot. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
So there's a theme to this, this evening, which is, this is where we're at, and this is what we're doing about it. And so you've just got a glimpse of what we're doing about it. Those are kind of some of the foundational things that are going on.
From the division and the school level.
Yeah, and so the, the cleanup on that is the Stafford All-In Plan. And catch your breath yet?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
See if we can knock this out. We've got a closed session, so.
Yep, yep, no problem. So let, let me start.
All this other stuff is just documentation.
And I'm not going to read, you know, all, every piece to you. But let, let me give you a high-level overview. Is, we know we have learning loss, right? And, and it's not just here, it's statewide, it's national. And, and our General Assembly has identified funding to help support additional funding to, to address not only learning loss through tutoring, but also implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which has been a largely unfunded mandate from the state. And, and then to also address issues related to chronic absenteeism. And so with the calculations that came down from the state, the state did provide Stafford County Schools ten point four millions in, in one-time flexible funding for operations and infrastructure to address the needs of students in all of these areas. Okay. And you can see the language up here. The state, so tutoring, evidence-based literacy instruction, you're going to continue to see that. That's the, the, the Virginia Literacy Act. And, and then addressing chronic absenteeism and student wellness as well.
Do you have a total anywhere of the number of students we're talking about who fall into the? I mean, you gave me the number by school, but.
Yeah, so, so it's ten, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-two individually identified students.
Great, for their, and their kids.
Yeah, you could, you can, the, the total here comes to about sixteen to eighteen, eighteen thousand, I think, but it's ten thousand unique.
So how much is it per student?
Uh, well.
Ten point four million divided by ten thousand, what are we talking?
Thousand kids.
Yeah.
Thousand bucks a kid.
A thousand bucks a kid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Over three years?
Over three years.
Three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a year.
Yeah. And how much per hour of tutoring?
Well, well, and it's to address not just tutoring, but it's also chronic absenteeism. It's also infrastructure.
So it's not all just tutoring, but like clearly a third of our kids need a lot of support. And this is just taking a look at our K-eight group of kids. So there, there are some pretty significant.
Thousand out of the K-eight, that's even.
So that's just higher.
Yeah, correct.
It's a higher percentage.
Yes, it's like forty percent of our kids. Oh, in, in those grades that need a lot of intensive support.
Ten million sounds very large. When you divide it by ten thousand, I'm annoying that way, aren't I?
And over, and over time, and over time.
I know, I'm sensitive.
Just in the interest of time, I'll, I'll, I'll move this along a little bit quicker. But, but I will say this, so the Priority One group, not everybody gets the same level of support because they need different things.
They need different things.
So there's maybe less support that's given to Priority Three versus Priority One by comparison. Because the, the group in Priority One, I mean, they, we know you're sinking right now. You're, you're not performing right now.
Do you know how many we have in Priority One?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So what number is that? It's not ten thousand, but.
I, I honestly don't have.
Off the top of our head. We've, we've drilled it down to the actual student and categorized them in each priority for each school.
Well, that's a good thing, because sometimes I think you may tend to just say, well, there's, they're just not going to pass it. So we'll focus on these other ones that are closer to passing.
And so Priority Two, it's like, did, did you just make it over the line? Or do you really know this stuff? And so there's a focus there, and even Priority Three, it's like, do you really understand what we're trying to teach you? Because this is cumulative over time, or are there things that we need to go back and tighten up on in specific strengths?
Yeah, and so we'll provide individual lists of students to schools that, that identify exactly where their needs lie. But, you know, again, this is based on an assessment at a given time, which is not always, you know, a measure of exactly how a kid performs. So schools will review those individual pieces of data and then augment those and provide additional supports for some or less for others based on kind of where they are now versus where they were at the time of the test. The state identified quite a large number of students for this. And quite frankly, you know, the Priority Three students, those are solidly in the passing range. So that's why we put them into, to Priority Three. So really, our, our focus is going to be on one and two, but we're always keeping an eye on those Priority Three students. So just keep that in mind. So we've set some basic expectations in delivery of, of the supports to schools. And so we're going to be setting, uh, student, uh, teacher-to-student ratios as close to one to five as possible. And, and I have to say that one to five is as possible, right? If you have seven kids that you need to identify, you're going to put them in a group. You're not going to create two teachers. We got to, there's some efficiencies that you have to have.
And this also may change based on the strand that's being taught.
Right.
So if there's a specific strand.
We're going to cohoar students as best we can to, to optimize the teacher's success.
Teaching kids reading is way different than teaching a skill in mathematics necessarily, especially in the earlier grades. And so that, you, there, you even get closer to one to one, it would be ideal. But you work with even smaller groups, especially in the early literacy. But, uh, so we're recommending, we have to set a lot of recommendations that include three to five hours a week, and Priority One students, a sustained period of time. Will it be, we don't have thirty-six weeks left in the school year. But this, what this reminds them is, just because the school year ends, doesn't mean that we stop supporting kids, right? So it may go into the next school year until we feel like we can really.
Some of this be done over the summer?
Sure, certainly. So we will be leveraging summer school programs as well, summer school time.
And that's on top of that.
And on top of that. So, uh, so again, still setting expectations.
January, January is our expected launch?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, we, we need the Board of Supervisors to also appropriate the funds there. They will have to hold a public hearing in December.
Yeah.
And that's the different money than what they were appropriating today?
Correct.
And will they, you said they will have to hold a public hearing in December? Meaning they actually will hold the hearing in December, so we can get the money?
Uh, that, that's our understanding.
Is this for, um, that's for sellers?
Uh, no, it's for this one-time money.
Are they going to do this together?
They've actually separated the two. The Board of Supervisors did approve by vote six to zero this afternoon that, that they would finalize our fiscal twenty-four operating budget as presented. So the, the school board's adopted, budget is being appropriated, that's a good thing. But this is a, is in addition to that, and it also has a carryover component. So if there's funds that are not expended by July one, there, there can be a carryover component. They will have to do a public hearing today.
So we'll have to do something specific to make sure they understand, because I think there was some confusion. That's what I was told.
With.
That was the last time.
Sorry. Some of these funds will be used to either procure or develop print and digital resources for tutoring and intervention. The state is actually providing access to some, some tools for, uh, that are procured by the state. There, we're going to have a focus on acceleration versus just skill identifying, identifying individual gaps and addressing those one at a time. Meaning, you take the grade level expectation and you say, okay, we want you to be here because we're trying to aim at grade level. If, think about it like a paved road. If you have potholes in that road, you're, you're, you don't just spend a ton of time on each pothole. What you're doing is saying, okay, what is this skill that's specifically related to where I need them to get? And I address it in real time to get them back up on grade level. The goal is getting them back on grade level. It is, and, and not so much is like making sure that they understand every single process in this one pothole. So, um, so then, uh, setting high achievement goals and expectations for every student, and then monitoring their progress. And so some of the tools and resources that we'll be providing are tools to help monitor student progress.
In real time.
In, in real time. So that's a super important component. That's something that we've been missing. And our incredible professionals in the Office of, with the Department of Academic Programs have identified some great tools and work with our executive directors of, of school leadership to identify the gaps and the great tools to, to address those needs.
So is there any way we could, are we planning to involve parents in some of this? So if you have digital tools and kids are taking ProBooks home, I mean, can we get parents on board to help their students out?
Certainly, depending on the tool and how it's used. But some of them are, there are some self-paced types of tutorials that, that could be used by parents to assist. There are also some one-on-one tutoring tools that would not involve parents necessarily because it would be, we would set aside time for a child to be with a tutor. But yes, we will be leveraging these with parents as well.
Is there any way that we can like create a profile for each student that's getting intervention about things that a parent could do at home to help? So that they know not only what we are doing at school, but maybe there are things they can do at home. Like when you're at your grocery store, have your kid estimate, how much do these two things cost, or whatever?
That, that's probably the, the more viable and useful utility at this point because a, a lot of what the expectations tied to the money are, is one, that, that the digital resources are very narrowly defined and that it is very face-to-face oriented. And that, that's where the focus really is, in us getting kids face-to-face, working on things in person. But, but having some kind of follow-up mechanism. Today, we met with your child in tutoring to talk about.
Ask them.
Money.
Well, and, and to make sure that parents know how their children are doing, right? Because we sent home a report card that says, you know, they're doing fine.
Right.
And so then the parent does.
The progress monitoring tools will really assist, but that should help.
But it's also not just, here's what, here's where your kids' weaknesses are that we're trying to overcome, and here's how you can help. I think those things are beneficial.
Because it looks to me like we have a, we have a lot of kids that need help, and we don't have a lot of money for it. So we better leverage those parents to help get their kids where they need to be.
Additionally, is there?
So that they know.
I see we're focusing K-eight, but is there opportunities for the high school kids to be involved in, you know, like you were just saying, even in some of the after-school, where they could come, you know, after their school time to engage with a teacher or engage with a student or whatever, to try to help some of these kids?
So I, I, there are a number.
I know there's no money in that piece, but I'm just saying.
Right, there are a number of clubs that, that, like NHS and others, that offer tutoring services, you know, to either students within the building. Some may, may do it cross-building. It, it's difficult to find time to work with those students, though, when they're in school all day, to help them know what to address with the kids. And so it needs to be very strategic and targeted tutoring. And that's why one of the things that we're doing is providing some additional staff to schools so that they can actually focus on tutoring and looking at the, the, the reports on what are the strengths in the, in the areas of challenge for each child, and then developing plans for each kid.
I'm just going to say one thing about tutoring that's really important. Tutoring can be a huge advantage or a complete and utter waste of time. And if we have someone who is tutoring on strategies that don't align with what's happening in the classroom or on content that doesn't align with the students' needs, this, this is just a waste, it's a waste of money. And honestly, this is one of the things that has kind of given us a lot of pause as we've tried to map this out. It's like, we have to be laser-focused on very specific things with very specific children for this to be a success. Otherwise, we're just throwing money away, and we're not okay with that.
I have a question, sorry. Um, so this is mandatory tutoring, or students can say, I don't want it?
I, I think we're in the space right now where. I think we're in the space right now where we're going to put this forward as this is what's offered and that this is a part of your assigned curriculum for the day. But I mean, obviously, parents don't know what's going on with their children.
Okay, and they can't, not that they would, I'm just asking.
Inside the school day is one thing. After-school time?
Yeah.
That's another, right?
And a big piece of the strategy has to have some after-school activities. I mean, we, at all levels, we need to have some component that has an after-school component.
We used to do that pre-COVID. There was a mandatory elementary tutoring for kids at risk for not passing the SOL. And we had busing and everything.
Where are the tutors coming from?
What's that?
Where are the tutors coming from?
So a mixture of-
Yeah, it could be a mixture of people. It could be retired teachers. So we could even hire-
Vendors that do this professionally.
Vendors that do it. We could, we could provide, you know, like, say, somebody that has childcare in the afternoon. And so they can free up their afternoon to do some tutoring with students. So we could provide that.
So that, it could be teachers.
The FTE, yeah. Could be split in many different ways, right?
Let's keep going.
Yeah, okay. And so, and then along with providing resources, we have to provide professional development. And weave together all of the other initiatives that we're doing, like NTSS, that's the multi-tiered systems of support. And also, the Virginia Literacy Act requires reading plans for every student in K-3 that are below benchmark. And so we will be weaving all those pieces together to come up with a coordinated plan.
It seems like so much paperwork is going to have to be done on each of these kids-
Yeah.
-to get to the point where, I mean, that's tremendous man-hours. That's just huge.
That's why we're going to have to hire some central staff to coordinate efforts. That's a great lead-in, thank you. And then also, and provide additional training as well on dyslexia identification. And then additional tutors and materials and, you know, all kinds of things that we need. We are actually weaving together not just this funding, but also some remaining ESER funding for addressing learning loss. And so we're leveraging that into the package as well to provide after-school tutoring funding for high schools and also middle schools and elementary schools.
I'm sorry to keep asking questions because we've got to go. But when you're hiring them and they're hourly, but is it like for two years? Like when the $10 million runs out, you know, like, do they, is it a contract? Like, you know?
We'll have allocations per school. And then, and then what we'll do is look at the remaining, remaining funding at the end of the year and then reallocate as necessary.
Yeah, so for example, we might contract somebody to serve at a site for a certain period of time, knowing that we've got a certain number of kids at a certain period of time with a certain set of needs. And, you know, we can meter that out, but it is hourly. It's hourly work.
The money will run out.
And the money will run out.
And they'll know that. You know what I mean? They'll know.
At the very least, this year, for sure, and then some next year.
When does this start?
As soon as we can get the funds appropriated.
And approved.
So hypothetically, we could see some results when we do our spring testing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We actually definitely should see some results.
Okay, that's good.
Type of spring performance.
And so, as I said in the first slide, it is money that is operational and flexible. I mean, it can address operations and infrastructure. And so to support some of our transportation needs, we're able to purchase some buses and then provide some increased tutoring rates and incentives to retain our staff, as well as additional resources for the academic year and also for summer school time to provide that sustained targeted student support. And so I'll start wrapping it up now. But we have a lot of enhancements that we're going to be doing to, on the Virginia Literacy Act, to enhance what we're already doing, to provide additional professional learning, to build a pathway and a pipeline of reading specialists because we are large, we're really, we need more reading specialists that can help address the specific needs of kids. And then that professional learning on dyslexia and the identification. And then also in the chronic absenteeism and student wellness world, we're providing, you saw the partnership with JED Foundation that we recently lauded. And then we're providing a number of curriculum resources to meet mental wellness needs as well as click licenses in order to provide more real-time data for administrators to make informed decisions. And then, obviously, this is not much of a cost or actually no cost. It's public relations campaigns that improve awareness and help improve chronic absenteeism, like our cool viral video that we did on, what was it, Taylor Swift?
I love that.
And then finally, creation of programming at the high school levels that really engages students. And so that, and the parental engagement programs at the elementary school level as well as the social development of students at the middle school level. So all in all, it's a huge plan. It's woven together with all of the resources and initiatives that you've seen and you've heard about over time. So thanks for your time. Sorry to rush through the very end of that, but-
You'll see this again in December.
Can I just add one? Can you go back one more time?
Certainly.
Just the last one. Can we please, please, please add bullets on executive function? Because what I see amongst my children's peers, they stay home because they don't know where to start with everything that's in front of them.
Yes.
And they don't know like time management and, you know, long-term planning for a project. And then it falls up. And now that they have deadlines and they can't turn in things late and they, you know, it's overwhelming when you've lost the opportunity for those skills, like depending on where you were when, you know, you were missing school. And I feel like, and then that plays into mental health. And then that plays into absenteeism. That even plays into probably some of the behavior problems we have in school because they are just overwhelmed with the tasks in front of them.
It's lacking executive function is not near the way I see college students that have-
Well, but, yeah.
The ability to triage.
But it's, that's like, that's an employment issue. That's a college issue. That's an enlistment issue. They need to know how to get stuff done and our kids are struggling.
All right, we have to make this motion to go into closed session. So Ms. Healy?
I move that the school board convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, the Code of Virginia, to consult with legal counsel and receive a briefing by staff members regarding actual litigation involving contracts, specifically Stafford Circuit Court cases CL-21003-04200 and CL-21003-60300, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation dating posture of the school board.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Give me your in closed session.
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the school board on November 14, 2023 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which a certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase? Ms. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Halsted?
Agreed.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Ms. Sigmund?
Yes.
And Dr. Warner?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and, oh, we have no, we have no action coming out of closed session. So we are going to go ahead and start our meeting for this evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November 14. This is our 7 o'clock monthly business meeting. First thing is to call to order and have a presentation of the national colors by the Colonial Forge High School Armies, ROTC, Color Guard Unit, and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, class. Right, face. Forward, march.
Again, I would like to thank Colonial Forge Army, JROTC, Cadet Sergeant Major Rhodes, Cadet Master Sergeant Gottluck, Cadet Master Sergeant Eber Lee, Cadet Master Sergeant Warner, Cadet Sergeant DeGonzo, and Cadet First Sergeant Ethan Donaldson. Their instructors are Colonel Mark Strong, Sergeant Major Lee Worthing, and Sergeant First Class Philip Roberts. Thank you again. Have a seat. Ms. Hall, the roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
She's here, she just stepped out for a minute.
Thank you. Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And we have no one who is participating electronically. So let's move to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Cast your vote. Tally the vote, motion passes 6-0. Okay, moving on to our consent items. May I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Do I have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, my only comment is I continue to be concerned about the cost of elementary school 19. So I will not be supporting the consent agenda, but it doesn't need to be pulled.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes 5 to 1. Thank you, Dr. Chase. Moving on to announcement of, or, well, announcement of appointments.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a really exciting evening for us in Stafford schools because we get to make a couple of really important announcements. And this one is a little sad in some regards because we've had the pleasure for the past year of having Catherine Buckman as our student representative and Maraki Solomon as our alternate student representative. And they'll still be with us for this meeting and the next meeting, but their terms are coming to an end as our very first student representatives in December. And we'll have two brand-new student representatives joining the school board next calendar year, starting in January. It is my pleasure, Madam Chair and members of the board, to announce who our new student representatives to the board are going to be. And so at this time, I'll ask them to stand up and wave. And we'll start with Jolaine Dukoo. Jolaine is an 11th grade student at Brookpoint High School. Let's give her a round of applause. We are so excited that you are here today. And it looks like you also brought a family member with you, too. So thank you. Fantastic. We'll hear a lot from Jolaine over the next year. And we will also hear a lot from her alternate student representative, Jennifer Oda Togun, who is an 11th grade student at Mountain View High School. Jenny and Jolaine have big shoes to fill. And we're just thrilled that you're here. And Catherine, thank you so much for your service to Stafford County and to your student colleagues and student constituents. And even though Maraki's not with us this evening, you guys have been a dynamite team. And we can't wait to heap our praise upon you at your last board meeting as a representative next month. So thank you so much. And we are so excited. This was something new that we tried in Stafford schools this past year. And so excited that we have the opportunity to continue. The next item that I have for announcements are administrative appointments. This first administrative appointment is really important to Stafford County Public Schools because it is the principle of our flagship school, Stafford High School. When I call your name, if you could please make your way to the podium and say a few words when I'm done with our introduction. Ms. Chelsea Tryon will return to Stafford County as the new principal at Stafford High School. For the last four years, Ms. Tryon has served as an assistant principal at Robinson Secondary School in Fairfax County, one of the three largest public schools in all of Virginia, where she has helped to oversee English and special education instruction and helped middle school students make strong transitions into high school grades. Prior to her current role, however, Ms. Tryon was an educator with Stafford schools for 15 years, a special education teacher at the middle and high school level, a principal intern at Brookpoint High School, and an assistant principal at both AG Wright and Mountain View High School. Ms. Tryon holds a bachelor's degree in psychology from Christopher Newport University, a master's in education with endorsements in both special education and administration and supervision from the University of Mary Washington. She is a resident of South Stafford and a Stafford High School parent and is thrilled to come home to serve her community. Welcome home, Ms. Tryon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, Madam Chair and School Board. I just thank you for this opportunity. I'm so excited to be rejoining the Stafford family. I've lived in the 22405 ZIP code for most of my entire life and just am honored to serve my community. With me tonight, I have my husband, Danny Tryon. He's the athletic director at Brookpoint. I have my son. He is a freshman at Stafford. My second son is at a band concert for Drew Middle School. He's in 7th grade. I have my dad, Kevin Weeks. He was a teacher for 35 years in Stafford. And my two very best friends, who we've known each other from middle school, both Stafford graduates, and they are also Conway Elementary School teachers, Stephanie and Amy. Thank you.
We'll get to this a little later in the agenda, but Ms. Tryon also brought her state championship cheer squad this evening, too. So congratulations there. I have two other appointments, Madam Chair. The next is Ms. Terilyn Pete will become our new assistant director for financial reporting. Ms. Pete joins us from Falkir County, where she was the director of a consolidated finance department serving both county government and schools. In that role, she was responsible for all general finance operations, fiscal policies and controls, audit oversight, debt portfolio, and financial reporting. Combined, she brings 14 years of experience in financial reporting and accounting for public schools from Falkir County and Prince William County Public Schools. Ms. Pete also brings the classroom perspective to her work, having spent six years as an elementary school teacher in Prince William County before entering the public school accounting world. Ms. Pete is a certified public accountant and has received her Bachelor of Science in Accounting and a Master of Teaching from the University of Virginia. Welcome to Stafford schools, Ms. Pete.
Thank you, members of the school board, Dr. Taylor and Madam Chair. I'm excited about the opportunity to come and work at Stafford County Public Schools. I've had quite a career path. As you can tell, I've been a teacher and now I've also been in school finance and county government finance. So I'm excited to like bring the next phase of my career into a school system where I feel like I can meld both professional backgrounds together. So I'm happy to be here. I'm excited to serve you all and the citizens and children of Stafford County. In my short time that I have been here, I have been welcomed warmly by the finance department. I feel like a part of the team already. And so I'm honored to be here, honored to be part of finance team, honored to be part of Team Mandy, and also look forward to working with all of you and personnel and school personnel all over this county as we get together and work together for what's best for kids. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, we are so fortunate to add some great teammates to our squad tonight. Our last appointment this evening is Dr. Tara Temple. Dr. Temple will join us as the new assistant director of special education compliance. Dr. Temple was previously an administrator with Essex County Public Schools, most recently as the assistant superintendent for the division, having previously served as the director of special education and student services and as an assistant principal. Prior to her work as the assistant superintendent in Essex, Dr. Temple was a special education administrator, coordinator, and teacher in King William County Public Schools. Dr. Temple has also served as both an acting superintendent in Essex as well as a school board member in King William County. Dr. Temple earned her Bachelor of Business Administration from Longwood University, a Master of Education in Special Education from Regent University, another Master's of Education in Educational Leadership from the George Washington University, and most recently, her Doctor of Education degree in Leadership from Walden University. Congratulations and welcome, Dr. Temple.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, School Board Chair and School Board members. I'm looking forward to working with the students, staff, and the community of Stafford County. The Office of Student Support Services has been awesome so far. Can't say enough about Ann and Megan, and I just look forward to continuing to bring forth whatever I can to assist the Department of Special Education. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes administrative appointments and announcements for this evening.
Okay, I had to give a big wave because I went to North Stafford, and Mr. Weeks was my yearbook teacher and took me on a trip actually to North Carolina. And then we became teachers together at Brookpoint, where his daughter and Mr. Tryon were both students while I was there. So of course I had to wave to my teacher. So total geek up here, all right. Okay, next, moving on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we'll recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students: integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Annually, October is recognized as Anti-Bullying Month. Stafford schools again enlisted the creativity of our students to answer the question, "How can Stafford schools create a world without bullying?" Students in elementary school submitted a poster. Students in middle school submitted a video. And our high school students wrote an essay. Tonight, to present our award-winning students is the president of the Stafford Education Foundation, Ms. Stephanie Johnson. Students, as your name is called, will you please join us at the podium? At the elementary level is David Panian. David is currently a 3rd grade student at Anthony Burns Elementary School. Ready? I'll look right here. Thank you. All right, sit right here. Our middle school award winner is Alexa Lewis. Alexa is currently an 8th grade student at Dixon Smith Middle School. We're going to watch her video. And at the high school level, our award winner is Mamuna Olson. Mamuna is a sophomore at Mountain View High School. All right, and if everyone will come in really quickly? Good job. Congratulations to all our award-winning students, and thank you to the Stafford Education Foundation for providing the cash awards for these talented individuals. Well, Colonel Michael Brooks, the commander of Marine Corps Base Quantico; Ms. Penny Rowley, the military family liaison officer from Marine Corps Base Quantico; our assistant director of professional learning, Monica Foreman; Ms. Becca Leggett and Mary White from our parent resource program, please join us at the podium. Stafford schools is proud of our partnership with the local military community and recognizes the unique struggles faced by our families and students. This year, Stafford schools became one of five systems in Virginia to earn division-wide Purple Star status, signifying our commitment to provide service and support in recognition of these hardships. A military-connected child can expect to move six to nine times between kindergarten and high school graduation. The Purple Star program ensures staff understand how to help military-connected children navigate the challenges with different cultures, curricula, standards, course offerings, schedules, and graduation requirements. Purple Star schools are especially attentive to students who arrive mid-year, missing out on the normal cycles of sports and club activities. Finally, Purple Star schools acknowledge that every military-connected child has left behind friends and support networks and may be dealing with a parent who is away from home on deployment. To ensure substantial programs are in place at each school to support the mission, military family liaison officer Penny Rowley of Marine Corps Base Quantico met with each school representative to review practices and the Purple Star application over the course of eight months. Our assistant director of professional learning, Monica Foreman, was instrumental in creating the required professional development module, while Becca Leggett and Mary White produced extensive special education support binders required for each building. Additionally, we are appreciative of the dedicated support provided by our local military leaders, Colonel Brooks. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to excellence in this shared community. Sir, your steadfast leadership ensures we remain inclusive and supportive of our military families. Thank you all for your work to ensure our military-connected families receive a safe and warm welcome to Stafford schools. The Stafford High School cheer team has once again claimed the 6A State Cheer Championship title, this year sharing the recognition with Colgan High School as co-champions. The team continues its tradition of excellence, having now earned this title two years running. Team members, as your name is called, please come to the podium to receive your certificates. Please remain at the dais so we can take a group photo afterward. Reese Barbie. Mackenzie Barham. Kennedy Begon. Natalie Begon. Anika Bonchish. Lily Bonner. Anna Capel. Addison Cooper. Mandy Craddock. Nira Fousnas. Dalton Gallahan. Lauren Harris. Malia Johnson. Jada Jones. Ava Lengel. Brooke Lowry. Lilly Palmer. Ella Pufubu. Riley Proudfoot. And Olivia Stanley. We'd also like to recognize our coaches, Janet Barham, Kristy Proudfoot, Ashley Dingus, Alyssa Guthrie, and Taylor Guthrie. This noteworthy achievement is an honest reflection of the hard work, athleticism, and sportsmanship of the entire squad and their amazing coaches. We're inspired by their commitment to both leadership and excellence. Thank you, coaches, for your continued guidance and leadership. We're proud to have such committed and dedicated coaches supporting our student athletes. Congratulations, students and coaches.
Oh, dear. Where did my screen go? Here we go. Thank you for all of those awards and recognitions and everyone who came out to honor them. Next up is our Technology Advisory Committee Report and Recommendations.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
School Board members, Dr. Taylor. As you may recall, you asked a group of our parents to look at cybersecurity, our technology plan, and this thing nobody had really heard of at the time, GPT. Now, nerds knew what that was, and frankly, I was a little bit surprised that we were asked to look at it. But the Technology Advisory Committee certainly understood the assignment. They have done a really fantastic job this year making recommendations and endorsements for how the policy and regulation you guys are going to get a look at tonight. So we have several members of our tack in the audience. If you guys will please stand up. Thank you for your hard work on this. It is also my pleasure to recognize Cynthia Trichler, our chairperson.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Taylor. My name is Cynthia Trichler. I am the chair of the Technology Committee, and I am also a resident of the Garrisonville District. So back in January, when we first received our areas of focus, one of those, ChatGPT, was very new to all of us. And I can remember the first time I used it. I wanted to try prompting it with something meaningful, and my daughter's birthday was coming up. So like any busy parent, I needed to come up with an idea. So enter ChatGPT. Quick conversation about her interests, and I was on my way to some ideas in a matter of minutes. And so that's a pattern that our committee members have shared. Over the past year, different members have shared ways that they've used ChatGPT or other generative AI tools personally or professionally. And that time-saving piece comes up a lot. And that idea that sometimes we can get almost 80% of the way to our goal with the support of that tool. So it's just really exciting to think the potential that that might lend to our educators here in Stafford County. So with that, I'm excited to share with you tonight our recommendations and insights based on the areas of focus that were presented to us. Specifically, we'll talk a bit about GPT and AI and cybersecurity. In the coming calendar year, we're going to focus more on how technology can support the goals and initiatives of the strategic plan and look forward to sharing more about that in the coming months. And so tonight, when we're talking about GPT and cybersecurity, we will be sharing with you three recommendations. Those three recommendations include adopting the new policy and regulation on AI so we can begin training with our staff on the benefits and risks. We'll also focus on increasing cybersecurity resources with additional funding and looking for ways to secure software by reducing the number of technology applications and really focusing on those that are the most secure and integrated. So goal number one of the strategic plan focuses on preparing students for their future. And from the beginning, our committee was really focused on finding ways to safely bring AI into Stafford County schools so we can help prepare students for a future with AI. And this quote from the Harvard Business Review really captures our why as a committee. And I'll read it to you. "AI will not replace humans, but humans with AI will replace those without AI." And so thinking about this and thinking about keeping that goal one of the strategic plan kind of in mind, we recognize that generative AI really does create new pathways in teaching and learning and can really prepare our students for what may be a very AI-infused future. And so our recommendation is to empower students and educators to learn with AI and about AI, but with guardrails. One of our committee members actually said it best in a meeting, and he said, "It sounds like the AI train has left the station, so we need to get on board, but with guardrails." And so as a committee, we thought about what those guardrails may look like and how we could accomplish this idea of learning with and alongside AI, and what would that look like? And so we identified three main areas to accomplish these goals. Establishing guiding principles for the use of generative AI tools. Professional development for teachers and building leaders that includes use cases and model lessons in core curriculum areas. And a communication plan, both internal and external, to help share awareness across the school community. The proposed recommendation and policy are based upon the recommendations that our committee had shared in the spring. And as a committee, we just want to thank you for valuing our parent input in that process. In late September, September 20th, to be exact, Governor Yonkin had issued Executive Directive Number Five, and that directive is linked in this evening's slide deck. Within that executive directive, he charged the Department of Education and higher education institutions with developing a plan that would accomplish three goals. Promoting guidelines for the use of AI tools to positively impact learning and prohibit cheating. Looking at ways that AI tools can be leveraged to personalize tutoring for our students. And ensuring that students have the skills and knowledge they need to be future-ready and ready for those future careers that will likely involve AI and these rapidly changing technologies. And so as a committee, we carefully reviewed some of these external resources, and we looked at different recommendations as a group, carefully reviewing- looked at different recommendations as a group, carefully reviewing also the proposed policy and regulation. And we believe that the proposed AI policy and regulation for Stafford County schools really shapes a strong foundation for the responsible use of generative AI tools. Specifically, it provides guidance in the following areas, all of which our committee really identified as key pillars to a strong foundation. Ensuring it's developmentally appropriate. Has curriculum relevance. Establishes a professional development and training plan. Has an emphasis on digital citizenship and student privacy. And focuses on proper citation and reference, especially when using generative AI tools. So adopting a policy and regulation framed around these pillars will really help our students inspire, empower, and excel here in Stafford County schools and then beyond. We also recognize that it's been less than a year since the launch of ChatGPT and that this really is ever-evolving. So this proposed policy and regulation do lend themselves to flexibility for those future changes as well. So I'm going to shift gears now to our second area of focus as a committee, and that was cybersecurity. Our work here was guided by a publication from the Department of Homeland Securities, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, commonly known as CISA. And they had put together a resource that highlighted challenges faced by K-12 institutions along with recommendations for how to mitigate and prevent cyber attacks. So this evening, we're going to highlight some of Stafford County's successes and continued challenges in three areas. Network security, account security, and internet safety. And that full document that I just referenced is also linked in this evening's slide deck. So we'll begin with cybersecurity. One of the biggest successes has been the CISA Cyber Hydr- Cyber Hygiene Partnership. Combine my words there. This partnership is a free service that the Fed provides, and it includes an annual pen test to help identify vulnerabilities, as well as continuing monitoring of those internet-facing systems, weekly reports, and immediate alerts. With that in mind, phishing is an ongoing challenge and is becoming more and more prevalent. There was another recent report from CISA that reported that more than ninety percent of cyber attacks originate with some type of phishing message that often tries to masquerade a legitimate colleague, friend, business partner. I know even members of this school board can relate to the impact of that when these hackers try and spoof county employees. So there have been several incidents across the school division, and at times, the IT team is working overnight to help ensure those phishing messages aren't clicked on. And in another recent report from CISA, they noted that more than eighty percent of K-12 institutions are underfunded when it comes to cybersecurity resources. Looking at account security, one of the greatest successes has been the Protect Your Paycheck Campaign. So through this process, more than fifty-one hundred Stafford County employees have successfully enabled a two-step login process. And we're all familiar with that with banking and finance and healthcare. And this two-step process ultimately adds that extra layer of protection. So if your account is compromised, typically, that unauthorized user is unable to bypass that second layer of authentication, really helping to keep your account secure. A continued challenge, though, is that not all software within the county is connected to a single login. And as a result, two-step can't necessarily be implemented at this time universally. In fact, there are approximately seven hundred and fifty different software and web-based applications within the school division. Our third area, internet safety, has a few successes. Common sense media and YouTube filtering. Common sense media is dedicated to teaching students how to use technology responsibly, and it provides resources not only to schools but to families as well. Schools across Stafford County actively use common sense resources, with some schools and educators even going as far as earning common sense education badges to help demonstrate their commitment. Another success has been with YouTube filtering, specifically with the educational category. So the way this works is if a student is logged into their school-issued Chromebook device on a school network or off-campus, but on that school-issued Chromebook device, any YouTube video that does not have the educational category designation will be blocked from their use. Now, a continued challenge that we face is sometimes students will access the school Wi-Fi via a VPN on their personal student-owned device. And when they do this, this sometimes allows them to gain access to websites that would otherwise be blocked on the school network with those school-issued devices. So on behalf of the entire Technology Advisory Council, we really want to thank you for the opportunity to serve. Together, we have three recommendations that we believe will provide position the school division and students for future success. First, we encourage the adoption of the new AI policy and regulation so staff can begin training on AI and the risks and benefits. We recommend increasing cybersecurity resources with additional staffing and funding. And we recommend reviewing existing software and web-based applications to find ways to consolidate so the most effective and integrated, those with two-step, are used across our schools. So we'll continue to monitor trends as a committee when it comes to generative AI and cybersecurity. But in the new calendar year, we're really excited to shift our focus to looking at the strategic plan and how technology can help support the enablement of that plan. So that concludes this evening's presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions they would like to share?
I would just like to thank the Technology Committee for all their hard work. They're truly an impressive lot of people with a wide range of experiences that they brought to the table, and they really had a great insight to all these very complicated problems. I took a course at the SBA on cybersecurity, and the reality is, it's not really a question of if, it's when, because they're always probing systems to get in. And even some smaller districts have been hit with ransomware and other software because they don't have those resources. So it's nice to see how how well our resources have helped protect us.
Ms. Segman?
I also wanted to thank you very much for your commitment, all of you, especially with technology. I feel like, you know, the whole landscape can change from, you know, where you start in January to where you end in December, that you almost kind of have to go back and change things more quickly than other committees might have to. I'm really excited about the AI, especially because for our kids, I feel like it's it's a normal thing, and us, you know, old people aren't as familiar with it. And that really hit me during COVID. I, through my Alexa app, I found out that one of my children was just asking Alexa for the answers to all their math homework. And they didn't see it as any different than using a calculator or any other tool for learning, whereas we're like, no, you have to learn how to do the math. But setting up those guardrails for our kids on the appropriate time and how much help you get from AI is going to be really beneficial. And then, of course, including the parents in on what all of it means and what's okay to use and not use is, you know, the second step. So I'm really looking forward to that in particular because I need help with that myself.
Okay, anyone else? Yes?
I'm, I think this is all fabulous, but I also have a husband that works as a cybersecurity engineer, and so I am always listening to the hacking that goes on for the place that he works. I have several concerns about AI, and part of that is the access that it gives our kids or gives someone else to our kids. And there is a great article out there. I tried to find the link before I got here. It's called "The Ethics of AI Ethics." And the fact that in all of the research on AI, not a single person that is in the psychology, sociology, or even the philosophical realm, has been asked about the impact that AI presents to our children and having them be exposed to it. So I'm not against it as a tool in general. There are no regulations at the federal level to control access to the information, and there's also no, no sense that in the future, the FCC will actually act on that, creating guardrails themselves. So I have concerns that our guardrails will be theoretical and that it will present a bigger issue. So I, I want to, I mean, I read, trust me, I've read as much as I can on this subject. Is there, was there any discussion about, and I'm not against it for the teachers, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great tool for the teachers to be able to utilize it to help do that stuff. My concerns are in the hands of the kids. Was there any talk about creating sort of a curriculum or class on AI, like as part of a computer thing, instead of just unleashing the whole thing to kind of see how that works?
There was some conversation about that, actually. And one of the things that we really talked about as a committee, very similar to what you shared, is that it would be a tiered approach. So, you know, a height, we're not, there won't be a situation where an elementary student is interacting with ChatGPT, but perhaps there might be a virtual tutor or a writing assistant or something like that that may be more prevalent in those younger years. So looking at it from a tiered approach standpoint. But in high school, our student representatives also talked about some of their computer science courses and finding ways to incorporate some of this AI conversation there.
So I want to support as much as I can on the process, but, I mean, I feel like we got social media, and we're like, yay, social media is awesome. And now it's killing us. So I just don't want to run into AI like shiny new toy, great, can't wait to use it and get that same feeling of hitting a brick wall at a hundred miles an hour. That doesn't negate the fact you guys have done amazing work and that I have read the stuff that you put in place. It's just I have a certain amount of protective instinct regarding it. The other thing, and I feel like you've covered all of it anyway, so it's literally about this emerging new technology, but also the vulnerability that it represents or presents to our kids. But also, these kids are smart. They get around a lot. So I worry that our guardrails couldn't stop those things from happening. And that's just, I'm just being honest.
And I think that there's a value in that education piece, too. I liked in the policy and regulation, it called out this idea that it wouldn't be used for entertainment purposes. So making sure that there is that curriculum relevance piece to the process, I think will add some value when it comes to establishing guardrails and determining what it looks like from a teacher-led standpoint or from a building standpoint in our schools.
So I just want to give you a quick example of someone that I talked to on this. What they said is, let me give you an example. Your kid goes to type in, and just was a stupid example, but they were trying to, you know, make a point, right? Like, there's very few letters that separate porn from prom, right? So it's also, how do we forget? And I get those things may be blocked, but those are my concerns. Some of that is naivety on my part. I don't really know enough about the functions, even though I'm reading the articles on them, right? I've never actually used it. So I totally admit my shortcomings on it. But it does present, it presents an issue for me, just based on what we've been through with social media.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Guy.
I use ChatGPT quite often. So even though I am old, like some people have said, I'm down with the kids and the ChatGPT, as long as it doesn't turn into Skynet, I'm for it. I love the teachers being able to use it. Well, that could happen, you never know. All right? I don't, but with your kid doing maths, ChatGPT can't do physics, because I've tried. It does not get the questions right, because I didn't pass that test. But I think it is fantastic. I've been using it to try and learn. I think for older kids, if we teach them while they're young, they can use it as a great resource, as opposed to the cheating. Because I've been working with, I've got two students, or two of my kids are in college, and I've been working with them on, you know, using it as a resource and because you don't want to be stupid when you graduate. Like, if, you know, you've got to know your craft, right? So I love it. I think this is great, and I'm here for it. I'm ready to, you know, take the next step as long as we stay human-centered.
Catherine?
Sure. So I'll just go ahead and say, it was an amazing presentation. You know, as student representative, I'll go ahead and give my perspective, you know, from a student's point of view, having had these experiences in schools. And it's amazing to see the things that you talked about, you know, ChatGPT, VPNs, these are huge problems, huge issues that I have personal experience with, things that are very prevalent, and yet things that really aren't very often talked about. So I thought it was so phenomenal to see you acknowledge this. And as a student, I can say that, you know, I appreciate you recognizing how big an issue this is in our school system, and I can appreciate the steps that you're taking to counteract this. So just wanted to say thank you. It was a great presentation, and the solutions are amazing. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, and I wanted to say appreciated the idea of providing our teachers with some instruction. My poor students now have to turn in copies of all their references so that I actually know that their reference is a real thing. And so it's important that our teachers get that. And I think you're absolutely right, the quote you started with about, you know, the person with Chat, with AI and human is going to take over the people who don't have it. So thank you.
I also agree. Ms. Haley, did you want to say something?
Well, I majored in foreign languages, and that's what I would consider this, for people like me. But I do appreciate you doing this because it is so important. I really like the guardrails. I mean, we shouldn't be jumping into anything without having, you know, some parameters, and especially with our kids, because they are vulnerable. And, you know, they need, no, well, because you were talking about the kids and doing it, you often show me how to do these things, right? Well, I'm actually, I'm up to date in texting now. Hey, I can, I can actually add somebody in now. I mean, so there is, there is some, there's some, there's some hope. See, I have to learn language, but anyway, thank you for what you do. It's really important that we have groups like, you know, your colleagues that can look at this and give us that outside perspective, because, you know, our staff works really hard, and the more assistance we can have, the better. And it just keeps us in touch with reality.
Thank you also for your presentation this evening. I know Ms. Segman and I were, and thank you, Mr. Cook, for helping us with the little phishing situation we had earlier. And so we were definitely, we feel like we got the support we needed when we needed it. But I also like how, when I was reading over how you have teachers being given the opportunity to learn themselves, again, as a tool for putting together lesson plans. I've kind of played around with it a little bit. I do have a son who's a kindergarten teacher, so I've just wanted to see, like, what can you do for a kindergarten teacher? It was really cool. But then I also like that we give the teacher the know-how and the tools so that they can utilize it in their, in their classroom for whatever purpose, you know, they have to support their students or to encourage their students in their assignments. So I'm interested to see how we can, you know, move forward with this. I learned about it last year at the SBA, and it just kind of blew my mind, like what was coming down the pike. You know, even the guy was talking in the front of the room, and he put up a video, and he's like, I bet you think that's me talking, and it isn't. And I was like, oh, no. Like, there's definitely some things that we need to make sure we protect our kids as well as we protect our educators. So I appreciate everything that you provided and also keeping our staff safe, too, for the different things that we have going on in the county. So definitely, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Transportation Advisory Committee Report and Recommendations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. The Transportation Advisory Committee was tasked by this body to come up with recommendations to enhance the safe transport of students to and from school and extracurricular activities for Stafford County. Before we get started, I do want to recognize the committee members that may be in the audience right now, if they can please stand.
Thanks for saying yes.
So without further ado, I want to introduce Mr. Barrett Rogers, the Chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Dr. Taylor, Madam Chair, School Board members, and fellow committee members. So this year, we were part of the inaugural Transportation Advisory Committee, taking over for the ad hoc previous year, which was charged to take a look at some of the challenges facing the trans- which was charged to take a look at some of the challenges facing the Transportation Department within the, within the school district. So, when we met originally last January, we took a look at some of the supporting documents that had previously been worked on and provided to the ADHOC. We collectively decided that we wanted to take a look and build upon the, the, the work that had already been done by the ADHOC Committee. And so, looking through some of the studies, we, we kind of bucketed the, the major challenges facing the Transportation Department into three kind of big groups. And, sorry, right-handed. So, we do believe that based off what we reviewed, the discussions we had, some of the speakers we had come in and present to us, that the Stafford County Public Schools Transportation Department is not currently adequately resourced to deliver the services to meet the current demand and future ridership within Stafford County Public Schools. The three buckets that we broke down and, and met together as subcommittees to kind of nug away on these were inadequate fleet facilities for bus maintenance and parking. Last school year, the school buses had to rely on VDOT for parking due to the lack of facilities, insufficient fleet procurement and replenishment strategy and resourcing to go along with that, as well as driver shortages due to recruitment and retention challenges. Now, I will say that there were some improvements that we saw from the ADHOC Transportation Advisory Committee's recommendations that were put into place and some improvements brought to bear on some of those challenges. However, we just don't think that, that that is, it's been enough, given the demand of ridership across the county. We took a look at the Stafford County Public Schools Strategic Plan, and we aligned some of these challenges that are negatively affecting the school system's ability to meet the, what we believe to be the expected or desired outcome for Goals Three and Four and some of the subcomponents of those. When we met, we looked from a lens of program efficacy and safety to our riders and to staff associated with the Transportation Department. So, just a quick, quick snapshot, we won't go into a whole lot of the stuff. We did provide a Word document or PDF document that goes a lot more into depth than the documents that we looked at, the material, and getting a little bit more granular in the challenges and recommendations that we have for the School Board. So, I would welcome anybody who hasn't already had a chance to take a look at that, please do so. But for inadequate fleet facilities for bus maintenance and parking, currently Stafford County manages the cost center for all county fleets, meaning the small maintenance facility that Stafford County manages has got to support all of the county fleet vehicles, making up over a thousand vehicles with Stafford County Schools only owning less than 50% of the fleet. The current transportation facility is too small, the maintenance space are not long enough to service safely the newer, larger school buses. The facility lacks the sufficient wash base to clean the buses and appropriately reclaim and clean the water. There's also, as I said, inadequate parking for the bus fleet. And previously, the school buses were, were parked at VDOT parking lots last year. Currently, using school parking lots due to the lack of facilities for drive, oh, and the lack of facilities for drivers exacerbates traffic flow in and out of the schools. While the school system was using VDOT, there were inadequate lighting. A lot of times, late in the fall or early into the spring, inadequate lighting and, and safe measures, facilities for drivers to use if they needed to use the restroom or something else. Frankly, I, I commute up to DC, and many times I would be heading 95 North, coming on to that, off that courthouse exit to 95 North, and I would see bus drivers out there starting up the buses, warming up, turn the lights on. And it was just like, man, I, I don't envy them whatsoever. Additional challenge that we believe is the inadequate or insufficient consolidated fueling capabilities. We've got to have a, a fuel point at Park Ridge. I think we brought in the gentleman who runs the, the maintenance facility, and the plan was to install high-flow fuel pump, but at the point in that conversation that had not happened, which causes delay in fueling the buses, and then sometimes those lines can stack up, which also increases the amount of time that a driver's got to go pick up a bus, go fuel a bus, go pick up kids, and get them to where they need to be. One of the recommendations that we have, it's the Transportation Advisory Committee, is look at engaging with Stafford County proper and shifting the cost center burden to Stafford County to manage. Instead of forcing Stafford County to go back, solicit funding for new properties, new facilities to work into the capital improvement plan. One of the things that Stafford County should do is establish a county-wide fleet maintenance facility that is adequate for bus parking, driver facilities, wash racks, water reclamation, as well as the adequate facilities to support the rest of Stafford County. Establish regional bus parking lots with adequate driver facilities and fueling points to decentralize where these buses are being parked and stored overnight, and hopefully making it easier for the bus drivers to get to those and service the area in which the, they're driving, within the districts. And then include bus parking and driver facilities in future school development plans and budget as the initial cost for having a school developed and built. Where we saw some of the, oh, sorry, got a slide ahead of myself. So, during the year, we spoke with the, the outbound Transportation Director, and one of the things that we discovered in the conversation and reviewing some of the reports that the ADHOC Advisory Committee had put together was that Stafford County is using buses that, that exceed the industry standards or expectations for the school bus lifecycle. So, the goal for Transportation Department should replace every bus every 15 years. 12 years active with three years substitute, which would meet industry fleet lifecycle practices. Based on those standards, at the time that we received this information, Stafford County would have to purchase 20 buses annually for four years to bring the fleet to industry standards. That did include the number of buses needed for county growth or new schools opening up. We recommend the development of a fleet procurement and replenishment strategy with dedicated funding annually to meet those needs. One of the things that we, we did discuss were the different types of school buses, gas versus diesel. One of the things that was discussed was given the routes and sometimes how long the buses drive versus not driving, gunked up kind of some of the diesel engine components. And those, those buses are a lot more expensive to service for fuel change, oil changes. And then that often decreased the lifecycle expectancy of those school buses, increasing the cost of maintenance by replacing diesel engines. So, we recommend continue deliberate planning for bus procurement options, fuel type and brand to maximize return on investment for the county. One of the areas we noted that there was some improvement since previous years was Stafford County coming in and matching some of the pay for the, the school bus drivers, and then also rolling in recruitment incentives for those who did and did not have CDLs. As of right now, previous meetings, we discussed that Stafford County, we believe, has an adequate number of bus drivers right now to cover down current routes. But any case that there is a, a few callouts or there's additional requirements levied, bus drivers usually have to pick up additional routes due to bus driver shortages, which increases student rider times. Sometimes it impacts the ability to pick up students because of bus drivers covering down on a second route. And as a, you know, as a parent, as a Stafford County resident, and, you know, I'm sure everyone else remember all the phone calls and text messages, the voicemails we receive when we have expected delays in transportation. I would tell you, most of our members in the committee were parents, some of them are bus drivers. We had an opportunity to discuss kind of both sides of the challenges there. And there, there is very much a visceral reaction sometimes when parents are talking about the disappointment or the delays and how that impacts them and their families. We so, we still believe that there's not enough recruited retained licensed bus drivers to meet the current demands. Again, with the school growth, with student growth, every year, that number is only going to go up. This requires the bus drivers to cover additional routes. The district maps, bus routes, and driver bus shortages, in addition to special academic programs, requirements in parking, fueling and fleet challenges, contribute to extended ride times, and pickup drop-off delays for students and their families. One of the things that we did get into a little bit as well, and there towards the end of the year, we had the, and I forget the gentleman's name came in and talked to us about the efforts that the transportation, yes, thank you, Mr. Dix. The efforts being made to address rider management and disciplinary concerns, I think is an improvement. We agree that it's a step in the right direction, but collectively, we kind of feel like those things had not gone appropriately addressed in the past and do compound the retention of, of bus drivers. So, we recommend that we invest in driver recruitment, retention, professional development. Continue to assess pay compensation to mitigate driver shortages and attrition. Look at where you can retain drivers and administrators through mentor program or re-skilling opportunities for those bus drivers to potentially move on to other divisions or other roles within the Transportation Division. And then, I think it's one of the most important things is managing expectations. Transportation is a privilege, not an entitlement. Parents responsible for rider behaviors and rider privileges can be forfeited if those things aren't taken care of. So, just kind of in summary, we talked about kind of the three main categories we think that are, are challenging the most the Transportation Department for effective program management and safety of Stafford County students and riders. Now, I will note that in conversation, we do believe that the Stafford County Public Schools Transportation Board is doing a very good job with what they have, right? There's a lot of passion there, there's a lot of care, there's a lot of hard work. And they, they are doing, we believe, everything they can do with what they've got. The messages that I bring forward you today is that what they've got is not enough to do what you're asking them to do. So, we recommend balancing Transportation Department investment with reduction of transportation requirements to achieve the desired outcome. Solicit parent feedback, get surveys, maybe a consolidated call center where inquiries or concerns can be addressed. One of the things that we had heard, that some individuals had heard that there were challenges, while others heard that there hadn't been challenges. Sometimes the office manager is on the brunt end of receiving, receiving those concerns, and sometimes it's others. So, having a consolidated call center, we believe, would allow Stafford County to appropriately consolidate and actually track kind of some real-time feedback on how the program is doing. We recommend adopting a county-wide opt-in policy to reduce unnecessary rider inclusion for route development. In previous years, it was not a opt-in, it was an opt-out. And obviously, as a parent, you want to make sure that you have all the flexibility and opportunity to make sure your kids get to school. So, oftentimes, that results in a parent saying, well, I'm not going to opt out, I'm going to stay in just in case I need it. And then oftentimes, routes are, are built out, riders don't show up to bus stops. Sometimes bus stops are created where no riders ever show up, and then those routes have to be re, rewritten. We recommend reassessing the district maps, those bus routes and walking zones to alleviate transportation requirement. One of the topics in conversation throughout the entirety of the year was looking at the district maps and, and kind of asking ourselves, this doesn't make sense when you look at it, right? So, especially with the, the addition of future schools, going in and reassessing district maps to make sure that those bus routes, those district maps are affect, you know, are, are done in a way that's effective stewardship of taxpayer dollars within Stafford County. We think shifting ridership for special academic programs, future school academies, and out-of-district students to parent self-student transport may be a way to alleviate some of those ridership requirements. We also discussed looking at consolidation of rider pickup, drop-off through the use of regional bus stop hubs. Again, I go back to, we, we think the Transportation Department is doing a really good job with what they've got, but they are being expected every year, more and more demand to deliver transportation services for the county. And I liken this to kind of that, you know, where I work, it's you can get it fast, you can get it cheap, or you can get it good, but you can't get all three, right? And so, looking back at some of the material and the information that we have, is it's not going to be cheap, it's not going to be fast, and it's, it, it's not necessarily going to be good with what you're, what the, the School Board is expecting. So, what we didn't want to leave you with is, is some, some immediate challenges. So, we think managing expectations now, but the facilities, the investment in school buses lifecycle and replenishment, as well as increasing potential compensation for bus drivers, retention and recruitment, is going to be a long-term requirement that's going to take time and money. So, we offer the, the initial recommendations for consideration to alleviate some of those challenges in the near term. So, I appreciate, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. And I do appreciate the partnership with Mr. Johnson as the, the recently arrived Transportation Director. Has been very supportive, and I would be completely at a loss if Ms. Uta had not been there to support us. So, invaluable for us during this year, so I can't thank her enough for everything that she's done for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Dr. Chase?
So, I am the late arriving board member on the Transportation Committee. I just want to thank Mr. Rogers for his leadership on the Advisory Committee. And yeah, I think we do definitely have some stressors with respect to transportation. And this board may have some really tough decisions to make if we want to actually make things work the way they're supposed to work. And there are trade-offs, right? We can make certain decisions to make things more efficient in order to put other things in place, or we can say we don't want to do those things, and then maybe we can't put those things in place. Or we can plan on transportation being a bit of a mess, so, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Go ahead.
So, I think the first is to thank the committee for, this is, this to me is literally the definition of like being caught in the spin cycle. You know, no matter how much, like, your clothes never dry, it just keeps spinning and spinning and spinning, and then whatever. A special thanks to the drivers who every day get up at some ungodly hours, by the way, and head into those poorly lit facilities. It's truly an awakening to have to spend the day on one, and so, I'm, I'm always grateful that Terry convinced me to, to ride with her and see it. I, I think that it's important for everyone who listens to the transportation to recognize that this is, this is, it is a long-term, this is a marathon, not a sprint. And if there were a simple solution, I think we would try and get to it tomorrow as quickly as we could, just for the safety of the kids and the sanity of the parents, it makes sense. But I think this committee has undertaken a huge task, and so, I thank you for all the work that we're reading here and seeing it, because this is an untenable situation.
Ms. Haley?
I, I appreciate you bringing the report now before we dive into the budget season, because I think you had some, some fairly significant potential budget topics for us to, to consider. And I expect the five-year plan will probably be addressing them, you know, as well. But the, the numbers are a little scary, you know, 20 buses for four years just to catch up, and then we're, you know, we're, we're on that cycle. But, but I'm not surprised by it, because in the past, like, the ancient history past, we used to have a lot of money left at the end of the year, and traditionally, we would spend at least half of that buying new buses. So, you'll see some years that we've got, you know, like dozens and dozens of buses that were acquired. Wasn't because they were budgeted for, but it was just there was funding available, and there was, there's always been a need for more. So, I, I appreciate that, and, and I'm intrigued by the, what was it, give it to the county proper? The, the, the facility thing. So, I think that's something we might want to have our next three-on-three put on their agenda, because we've always been struggling with what can we, as a school system, do, where are we going to come up with the money? But it's not just a school concern, it's, it's the county as well. So, I, I think that's something I'd like to see our, you know, our board talk with their board on, and maybe we'll get somewhere. So, thank you for the, the hard work and the, you know, the very, you know, well-founded recommendations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Sigmund?
Again, thank you, all of you. This is one committee that I was surprised didn't exist when I was, you know, a few years ago. So, I am really grateful for its creation and its existence, particularly because I do think it's really important for families to be involved in this conversation, even just to understand how it works. Because when I don't understand what's going on with my kid at school, I can make a parent-teacher conference. It's not so often that we see parent-bus driver conferences to understand how things work on the bus. So, to even just get a dozen people around a table to talk about how things work and let that information kind of and let that information kind of, you know, be on the record and carry back to our neighborhoods and our districts, I think is really, really helpful to having parents understand the stress that our drivers are under and our system is under. So I'm just really grateful for the conversations that are happening, especially as we are. Even though we don't want to be, we are a growing community. And every time we open a new subdivision, that just throws transportation. They have to reroute on a dime, just like we have to, you know, be ready to accept all of those students. They have to get to us and they get to us through transportation. And sometimes that's like overnight. They have to flipper out to add some kids in. So it is should, transportation should always be an ongoing conversation. And I'm looking forward to this committee continuing to do that.
Thank you. Dr. Warner?
Thank you for this report. I really appreciate the work you've done. Clearly, we have not been investing in not only the replacement buses, but also to accommodate growth. I was shocked to learn that less than half of our fleet is serviced by our facilities. And I think that's definitely a conversation that needs to be had with the county that they need to help with that investment because they benefit from those services. I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate the perspective from the community and the drivers and the parents who've participated in this. And I'd like, I'm hoping that Mr. Diggs will be able to help with some of the behavior problems. I think he's already begun some of the professional training and and other things. And I think he's definitely, he knows, he knows from where you come since he used to drive buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guy?
Thank you so much. I too didn't know that this didn't exist until it existed. I was like, oh, I just assumed it was there. I think it's incredibly important. And you know what I've noticed since we've had this committee? When even when it was put up ad hoc, you know, the the public discussion about transportation and what's going on. To me, at least on social media, I see much more respect for the bus drivers. And I see much more correction from parent to parent about what is expected of bus drivers or transportation on a whole. So I just look at it holistically, like this is, not going to say it's the most important, but it's so important that this committee stays and continues to do what it's been doing. And, you know, it's unfortunate we haven't had it earlier. I do have two questions because I just want to understand your recommendation. When you say shift ridership for special academic programs and academies, out-of-the-district students to parent student self-transport, my brain isn't functioning.
Yeah, so trying to put together a lot into a short presentation. So some of the challenges that are exacerbated by the special academic programs, having to be picking up kids and moving them to another school so that they can partake in other academic programs. The potential for future academies to be established within Stafford County and opening that up and providing that potentially that transportation across county for whoever gets accepted into those academies, but also providing transportation to students who are going to schools outside of their district.
Okay, so you're saying like have the parents drive those students?
Correct, right? So my my son, when he moved in with me back in 2017, we were the North Stafford District. He started going to school there. We moved into Colonial Forge. We gave him the opportunity, whether he wanted to stay at that school or if he wanted to transition to Colonial Forge. At the time, we were expected to make sure that he had transportation because he wanted to stay with North Stafford. Given all the demands, transportation and ridership, making sure that we're focusing the resources that that are limited on the must-dos and then maybe saving the nice-to-haves for additional investments.
Okay, and then my other question was consolidate rider pickup drop-off through the use of bus stop hubs?
So right now, a lot of the bus drivers are parked at a school and they have to go in, park, grab the bus. And then sometimes they're going to wide areas within the district, depending on whatever the route is and whatever districts they're supporting. The regional hub concept would basically say, hey, we're coming here into these areas to pick up regional areas. And the parents would bring them a little bit closer to consolidate those routes to make it a little bit more effective.
And that's for like far out homes?
It could be for far out students out in the far reaches of the district or the county. Or depending on the approach, it could be something that's established countywide.
Okay. Oh, no, we're not touching section three. Okay, thank you very much. I think that that is good. I do, you know, from what you said, right? We used to have money left over at the end of the budget and that's how we brought buses. That just shows how underfunded we are. I say the same thing every chance I get. That shows how underfunded we are, that we can't just, you know, buy the buses that we need to be, you know, responsible for all this stuff. But we have to literally wait until, you know, and now there is none, so. There's no leftover money. So just to everyone in transportation, it isn't that the school board doesn't care and doesn't see the need and doesn't know the need, but you can't get below from a turnip. And that's unfortunate.
Yeah, I think, you know, being a bus driver is a thankless job in many cases. And using end-of-year fallout as your strategy to make sure you have adequate fleet to support ridership is not a sustainable strategy either.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I, for one, I love the idea that, you know, we understand the importance of a bus driver when we realize they are the first face of Stafford County Public Schools for many of our students and the last face that many of our students see as they leave school, enter onto their bus and get taken home. So those are very, very important people that we need to take care of. I also liked what you had to say about the responsibility of parents to be more involved in the riders' behaviors. I know that that's been the situation. I mean, it's pretty, they're pretty, they rank pretty high as a superhero when you consider the fact that most of them drive with three classes of stu-, three classrooms of students behind them. And most teachers teach with one class in front of them. So it's pretty impressive when you think about what our drivers do. And I also think that it's, you know, it's going to be some really hard budget decisions again for us this year when we vote to take care of our fleet, take care of our drivers, which of course is meaning taking care of our kids. So we appreciate your contribution this evening and thank you too.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to our next, which is our student rep report.
I can hold off.
Okay, Catherine, thank you.
Hello. So it's great to see everyone tonight. I do just have a very quick report. So first of all, I'm just going to go ahead and touch on the mental health campaign that I'm sure you're all very familiar with at this point. And I just wanted to give a really quick update on the status of the project that I've undertaken with one of my good friends from school, Ben Minor. So in the last month, since I had a chance to speak with you all, Ben and I have decided to name this project the Green Pin Project. So with this initiative, we'll be working with students throughout the county to produce and distribute little green ribbon pins, which are the symbol of mental health awareness. So not only that, we're also looking into finding online workshops and videos that we can use as a resource to inform students about important mental health issues. So Ben and I are so excited about this project and what it will do for our county. We're hopeful that the initiative will create a community of students who are actively engaged in community support for mental health. So just a couple of weeks ago, Ben and I had the opportunity to speak about this project with Dr. Taylor's Youth Advisory Committee. So this committee consists of a number of different students from across the five high schools who take a dedicated interest in county policies and programs. So not only did I get to pitch my project to this group, but I also got to stay and participate in some of the activities as well as meet a lot of wonderful students from across the county. So this was a really great experience. It was such a fun group of students to work with. And I'm so excited to begin this collaboration with members of the committee who are interested in helping us out with our Green Pin Project. As far as future outlook for our project, our next steps are looking like funding, organizing supplies, identifying distribution channels, et cetera. And I'm really hoping that in the next month or so, I'll really be able to hammer out the details of this. So next, I'm really excited to say that tomorrow I will get to attend the V S B A conference in Williamsburg. So this is such an amazing opportunity. And I'm looking forward to it as an opportunity for me to deepen my understanding of board processes. Not only that, but I will also have the opportunity to meet and network with other student representatives from around the state in our very own student representative workshop, which is such a cool thing. So this really is an amazing chance for me to learn about other student representatives, to hear about the issues that they're facing in their own counties, to understand the changes that they're making and the solutions that they're coming up with to the issues that they found. And really, just overall, I'm looking to kind of diversify my perspective as a student leader. I think that is incredibly important. And I'm expecting this conference to be not only hugely fun, but also really beneficial to me. So not only will I be attending this conference, but our 2023, 2024 student representative and alternate student representative will have the opportunity to come with us. So I'll save my monologue for the, my farewell monologue for the next meeting. But I just want to say congratulations to you both. It's bittersweet to say goodbye. But really, I can't even put into words. This position is such an incredible opportunity and we're so, so excited to see all that you will accomplish in the upcoming year. So that about wraps up my report. If you have any questions, especially pertaining to the Green Pin Project that I mentioned, feel free to send an email and I'm happy to try and answer to the best of my ability. So thank you.
Thank you. And make sure you bring us all a green pin too. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, moving on to our citizen comments. I see we have six for this evening? Okay.
The first citizens signed up are Sean Van Lebender, Nicolette Grant, and Vernon Green.
Okay, if you would like to come up, Sean, Nicolette, and Vernon, if you will understand to the side and we'll have Sean come and speak to us first.
Yeah, I get to go first. Good evening to the board, Madam Chair and Dr. Taylor. Firstly, I'd like to thank you all for supporting the fine arts wing renovation at North Stafford High School. This improvement will bring greater education to the current and future students of the school district. I'm here today to address a critical issue, the pay of your bus attendants. Bus attendants play a very vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of your students. However, your current starting hourly wage of fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents does not reflect the importance of their roles. According to the information sourced from a bus driver in Stafford County Public Schools, bus attendants are required to undergo as much as the same training and certification as bus drivers, with the exception of obtaining a C D L. This highlights the level of responsibility they have to keep students safe on buses. Or sorry, my apologies. Wage of fourteen ninety-two does not reflect the importance of their roles. According to the information sourced from a bus driver, Stafford County Public Schools, this highlights the level of responsibility they have to keep students safe on buses. I apologize for losing my place. The current pay scale poses a challenge to attracting and retaining qualified individuals for these important roles. If Stafford Schools continues to pay just above minimum wage, you risk undervaluing the efforts of your bus attendants but also facing the difficulties in maintaining a reliable force to keep your head start in a special education buses running smoothly. To increase these challenges, it is recommended to increase the compensation for bus attendants. This adjustment would make Stafford Schools more competitive, attracting and retaining qualified individuals better suited for the position. This in turn would contribute to the smooth operation of the transportation service and minimize disruptions for students in schools. On another note, the new artificial intelligence policy that was brought up earlier would support students when they are, when they're creating professional work. So it's a good idea to implement that policy into the classroom. Fun fact is that I wrote this speech with the support of Chat G P T. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vernon Green. I am the CEO of G Cube Enterprises and the founder of G Cube Community Services. It is an honor to be here, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Taylor. I'm coming today to speak to you on several issues all related. First, from an industry perspective, as a small business owner here in Stafford and a longtime partner with Stafford County Public Schools, I'm really struggling to find qualified talent to hire. And and I, I love my relationships. I've hired directly out of the Stafford County Public School system and brought them in under our wing. But we're finding that today, I spent the last two days up on Capitol Hill talking to representatives and senators about the future of cybersecurity and education and where we're lacking and how important this is all the way up to the the level of national defense. And so as we look at the things that we've been working on together, industry and academia, industry moves at the speed of business and academia moves a little bit slower. But we've been able to do some great things together. And one of the things that I'll say is today, while up on the hill, we were able to talk about all the great programs that Stafford is running. And some of the other congressmen were very receptive and wanted more information. Our Cyber for a Plus programs, even the things we're starting with our nursing programs and our certifications. But I believe that the discussion on the, or the question on the table today about moving towards academies, it is my opinion from industry that this would put Stafford County Public Schools in a position to better meet industry's needs of a qualified workforce. We understand that everyone is not going to go to college. There are some people that aren't ready. I wasn't ready to go to college when I came out. It would have cost, saved me a lot of money if I had thought about that when I went. But yeah, and so to that point, doesn't it, aren't we providing a service when we're helping our students with a pathway that puts them directly into the workforce, making a very good cost, a very good salary, a very good career move? Aren't we setting our students up better when we give them even an opportunity to fail at a career? Like if we say, hey, we put them through this whole academy and they just identified something that they didn't want to do, it still saves me money. And so my time is up, but I implore you to please move forward with the academies vote because it is important to industry. Thank you so much.
Next three?
The next person up will be Christina Hawkins, followed by Molly Denham, and then Jeffrey Trigger.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christy Hawkins. I'm in the Aquia District. I'm here to support the deferment of passing the Program of Studies High School Academies. My overall feeling is that there has not been enough communication, consultation, or comfort given to parents, students, and teachers regarding how the proposed programs are going to be implemented. There's not enough research into each program and its development and how the new Program of Studies will benefit the whole school community. I lived here for 11 years. My four children have gone to Stafford County Public Schools for the whole time we've lived here. My oldest has graduated, earned her International Baccalaureate or I B diploma and is attending a prestigious college out west. My child number two is now a full I B junior. And my number three child is a freshman in the pre-D B program at Brookpoint High School. We know that the I B program at Brookpoint has been the rigorous, thorough program that our kids needed for post-secondary schools. I understand that as part of the proposal, there's going to be two high schools with governor's schools and that the proposal says that I B is going to be moving to Mountain View. I feel that the county needs to have two high schools with the I B program. And by deferring, we'll be able to help encourage more consultation with the instructors to consolidate the program so that we can figure out how to do that. The I B program provides students, whether full I B or partial I B students, the challenging courses to get into the prestigious schools, many with scholarships that they desire. However, many of the I B students, especially at Brookpoint, are first generation finishing high school and in this case will be first generation going to college. And their parents don't have the resources in order to get them to, to transport, just like they were talking with the buses just now, of possibly having to get all the way to Mountain View if they're districted for Brookpoint or Stafford. So that's my first point as a parent. Secondly, as students, the kids have had so much to deal with the last four years, starting with the redistricting of the elementary schools back in September 2019. Yes, the current seventh and eighth grade students are those kids. My number four child is one of them. And of course, the complications with the pandemic. I feel like they are finally getting their feet underneath them. And in fact, one of my middle school math friends said that the current eighth graders are not really ready for this new Program of Studies, both in math or English. So we need to defer so that they can have a little bit more time to be able to get their feet underneath them for that. The bus transportation, that was an amazing presentation. We need to defer to give them time to be able to get the buses together for this program. Teachers, the ones I've communicated with, they need more communication from the committee that's putting together this Program of Studies, consultation, and comfort. Many of the teachers that I've heard from, they feel blindsided about the changes that are being proposed. Some barely found out two weeks ago that they might be having to move schools. There's a level of concern that the proposed Program of Studies has not been vetted enough to have teachers prepared to teach the material required this coming fall, and departments heads would like to be part of the creation of these programs. I know my time is up.
Thank you.
Please consider deferring. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Molly? Denham.
Good evening. Good evening. Molly Denham from the Hartwood District. I have two items to comment on, both pertain to the upcoming proposed Program of Study Agenda Discussion Items. First, I believe there's a staggering inequality in middle school electives, specifically as it pertains to language arts. For reference, there are twenty performing and visual art electives, nine technical and career electives, and ten academic electives, breaking down into three literature, two leadership, one history, social science, and four STEM. The language arts program, on the other hand, is practically being stripped from the middle school curriculum. And not only will there be no language program available until eighth grade, but currently the only offering at that point will then be Spanish. I understand the reason, and I offered a potential solution. I request the board follow up on my previous recommendation for an improved foreign language program. I would like to see the school board engage local community members with language skills outside of the underutilized and hard-to-staff traditional school-offered languages. I request we look at creating a program to work with community members wishing to have an education career as language teachers, and assist them with getting proper certification or education to teach language arts in our schools. Stafford County has incredibly rich African, Asian, and Middle Eastern communities. The language skills these communities could provide would be of tremendous value to our children. Not only that, but it has the potential to open new career pathways for many of our community members. I believe we need to look beyond the traditional Western European languages and introduce language skills that will actually be of significant value to our students as they start to navigate today's world. I'm aware that there's obstacles to overcome, and this is not an immediate solution, but we have to do something, and I ask the board to explore the possibility of an improved language arts program for our county. Second, I want to offer my support to Dr. Taylor's recommendation to continue with the implementation of the new high school academic program, or academy programs. I have a fourth grader who would like to be a teacher currently. We talked about some of the options that she may have in high school, and she's extremely excited for the opportunity to have specialized education during her high school years. Of course, she will likely change her mind on her profession by then, but as a parent, the concept surrounding high school academies greatly appeals to me. It provides her with a directed pathway to explore her interests while giving her a leg up on a potential future career. Conversely, it provides a safe space for her to explore her interests and learn if they actually match up with her expectation before she graduates high school and makes a costly decision for me. I don't believe we can effectively defer this decision. We have seen what happens in this county when we continually kick a can, it never gets picked back up. I'm urging the board to approve the 2024-2025 High School Academy Plan as outlined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Trigger? Good evening.
Good evening. I am Jeffrey Trigger, and tonight I'm speaking for other people. I am the Stafford Education Association Middle School Director, and I do live in the George Washington District. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of member concerns on the middle school schedule for twenty-four and twenty-five. So first of all, the SCA was approached with concerns about the possible schedule, specifically the seat time for social studies, science, and world language courses. After a survey and reaching out specifically with members, and boy, did I take a beating there, I had several members return in frustration, that's putting it mildly, about not even knowing there was a schedule change possibility. The SCA itself is not taking a position of yay or nay on the middle school bell schedule. We're not saying yay, don't do it, we're not saying don't do it. But what we are asking for is a pause on the vote to at least get the schedule out to staff and to parents, so people know what the proposed schedule is, and then get some feedback. This would allow that decision to be very transparent. And that's basically all we are asking for, and I will thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are moving on to our action items. The first one is, are you okay? Okay, sorry. The first action item is nine point oh one, adoption of proposed new policy, two one one two, proposed amendments to policies, two one one zero, three one one one, and three five zero two, and proposed amendments to regulations, two one one zero, three one one one, three two zero two, and five eight zero one. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the policy adoption.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
I don't really have any comments or question, or concerns, but I, but I just want to make sure there were some things that came up at the very last possible minute, that I had questions for Michael Bowling, and we did get a chance to speak for like ten minutes on it. So whereas I have no problem with how it's written now, I just want to make sure we're aware that I still have some questions that don't necessarily impact what's currently written, but I would like to have those questions. It's a much deeper conversation than what you're looking like.
Can you email those questions?
So they were emailed, and we had a brief conversation tonight, but I, it, it may come up again for me. I just don't want people to be like, hey, we just did that, like, yes, I know.
When you get the answers, if they could be shared with everybody?
Yeah, I don't thi- I think it's more clarification. Yeah. I just, I just wanted you guys to know, like, in case you saw it again, it wasn't like, I didn't know it was on here. I know, I read it. The ones that you put on later were fine. It's just there are some clarification questions left on the other end. So I just wanted that, that, in full transparency, I wanted that known.
Gotcha. Anybody else? Ms. Healy?
How are we going to publicize the, the change in the policy with respect to the students who are not enrolled or the, the homeschoolers? Because I think that's very important for the community to be aware of that. That's a significant change in our, you know, our, our, our policy. I'm, I'm supporting it, but I think for, for families to be aware of it, it needs to be somehow, you know, publicized.
Yeah, and, and typical, anytime that the board changes a policy, we begin by promulgating it by putting it in your policy manual right away. When we do have something that is specific to certain constituencies, we may advertise that with constituencies, if that's the will of the board, and you all want us to do that, we can certainly do that and advertise that with a specific constituency group.
Well, I would ask the board to consider supporting that, because putting it in our policy manual may not make it something that a member of the public would be aware of, a, a homeschooling, you know, parent, that their, their child may want to take a class. And this has come up in the past, and we've always said, no, our policies don't allow anyone who is not enrolled in Stafford County Public Schools to take a class. And there, there are certain, you know, restrictions on it. But I, I, I would like to make sure that the, the, the public, particularly the homeschoolers, or the, the, even, you know, the, the people with children in private schools are aware that this is a change in the policy. I, I think it's, it's good. It's opening up our schools to the entire community if they choose, you know, an alternate educational path. But just putting it in our policies, I don't think would really help get that, get that word out. So I, if, if, if the board, you know, has no objection, you know, I would propose.
So Ms. Healy, I'll meet you halfway. How's that sound?
We've come up there.
We, we have regular interactions with our homeschool population, the annual interactions by law. That's a, that's low-hanging fruit. We actually have zero interactions with our private school populations. So we are, we are more than happy to promulgate this policy with our homeschool populations when we interact with them on an annual basis, if that's amenable.
Well, that, that's terrific with the homeschoolers, but this policy specifically addresses students in private schools. So I would, you know, I'm not asking for, you know, a, a campaign, but, but just some way to, to, to get this information out there, to share it. Maybe one of your advisory committees come up with some ways that don't, doesn't cost much, or, what's that chat thing they can maybe ask? Yeah, why don't you ask, ask them how, how to best get that, 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 that word out? But it, no, I, I, I really think this is a good change, and it's not going to be beneficial to these families if they don't know about it, that's all.
Okay. Ms. Sigmund?
If I can make the recommendation that you shared at your Faith Leaders Advisory Committee, a lot of the homeschool groups in this area are organized through churches, and a lot of our private schools are also organized through churches. So at least that would start the ball rolling in the right directions, and then they all know each other, they'll get together and pass the information along.
Okay, are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yeah, my, I just have a concern. I'm sorry. I know y'all want to vote, but, because I'm conflicted, and I think this is all good and lovely, but for the, I feel uncomfortable, and it's hard for us to communicate, because we can't have more than two people talk at one time, or it's like an illegal meeting or whatever. And so, I don't know if the information that I get is always factual, just because when you tell one person, and then it's like the telephone game, game we used to do back in the seventies, and, and then you get, you know, different information. But I, when things get changed, like the regulation thirty-two oh two, when it gets changed before, after the agenda's set, like, I'm just, I, I don't, we shouldn't be doing stuff like that. I don't know, I don't understand how it comes about. Or maybe that is totally normal, and my understanding of how the agenda is set is, is wrong or skewed. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, right? Like, I, I just feel like I shouldn't be able to say, hey, I want to change this regulation, and, and Alyssa is my second, and not bring it to, to the chair or the vice chair, if that's the way we're supposed to do it.
Is this, is this about, which, which one is it?
Thirty-two oh two.
Thirty-two oh two? Yeah, I mean, I, I simply asked Liza, or I'm sorry, Dr. Warner, why the policy was being changed. I would have perfectly happily pulled it off and discussed it as was. This was not a decision made by me.
So she asked a question, I was following up on her question, because when we discussed it in governance, we didn't have any questions. So I, then I talked to Ms. Sigmund, who had a similar concern, because it was talked about differentiated instructions. So I just asked the question, why was that taken out? Mr. Bowling said that there was really no reason that it had to come out, that they really didn't have any heartburn if it stayed in, but they wanted to qualify it, because we have a number of provisional teachers with provisional licenses. All of them are required to get the training, but they may be at different places in getting it. So I think that's why the language was changed. Then I spoke to Ms. Randall and Ms. Holstead to, to close the loop back on the Governance Committee. So that's kind of how that came about, and it just seemed easier to fix it before the meeting than to pull it and then fix it. But I, I appreciate your concern, and I, I just thought we had covered everything.
Are you, are you uncomfortable having, should we, do you, would you like us to pull it? No, fine, with that explanation.
Oh, process.
Right.
But I think you're correct, that process-wise, it should have just gone through the normal way.
And I was, I don't like to do conflict, so I was very uncomfortable saying it, but then also, I'm mine, I got to speak my truth, and so I just had to say it.
I actually didn't know that it was going to be fixed all before this meeting.
Okay.
Because I think Dr. Chase only asked me like last week about it.
Okay, well, I'm going to put my official, I was going to officially say I was aggrieved, but I'm not, I am no longer aggrieved. It's good, let's vote, I'm ready.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I could just add that staff supports the change.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
I'd just like to make a comment. I, I share, Ms. Geis, what are you, concern, is concern okay?
I was confused.
Well, I don't share, I'm not confused. I see what's going on. But, but my concern is that why is this board getting into regulations? Because our job is policy. Regulations are in the lane of the superintendent. We really have no authority to approve or disapprove regulations. We approve policy. Now, if the regulation is inconsistent with policy, then I think we have, you know, an issue to raise. But for us to go and, and, you know, to be wordsmithing a regulation especially, and I'll call this behind the curtains, because, I mean, I got, what did I get? A, a call from Dr. Warner at Dr. Chase's request, so just so I was in the loop after the, you know, it was done. And, and I'm like, well, what's the issue here? Because you put, you know, where, what, what is the wording, something?
To the extent possible.
You know, to the extent, yeah, to the extent possible. So that's a, to me, so what? It means nothing. To the extent possible, of course, we're going to do it if we can. So all this much ado about nothing, but, you know, I, I'm for transparency, and, you know, when we, when we put a change in at the last minute, I think it sends a message to the public that, you know, we're, something is going on to have this change done. So I, I think we need to think about this, and perhaps it's something we can talk about, you know, when we're discussing, you know, our, you know, our board policies, or practices, or evaluations, or whatever. But, but I think, I think it's important, and, and I'm, we have a Governance Committee for a purpose. We may not agree with the Governance Committee, but we trust the Governance Committee to vet these, you know, these policies and to come back for us. And that's why we have two readings on this. You know, the policy comes at first time for review. If there's any issue at that point, it should be raised. But when it comes back for approval, you know, to make a last-minute change, I, I just don't, I don't see that as being proper.
Well, we can pull it and, and.
I, I, I'm, I'm saying it means nothing, but it's the point, that we're making a change. Once the agenda is put together, once it's been through the committees, once it's been discussed, and this change has come from discussion, you know, among more than two board members, which is okay, but it's not the way I like to do business. Well, you know, simultaneous, what, whatever. It's, it's just circle back to, this is all about a regulation, which is really not our business.
So if I can, Madam Chair, I agree. Well, I, I agree, but I don't agree. I think that the, the staff has been, particularly through governance, has been very helpful in providing the requirements, the, the regulations to our policies for us to read and ask questions to, because as an individual who's not necessarily actively engaged in the regulation every day, but supporting a policy or maybe trying to change a policy, it, it helps to have access to the regulation to understand it better, and actually from being exposed to the regulation and having the reason to read it. You know, I had spoken to some folks who had some questions, so I was also able to get clarification for them and avoid it. So, so it may not be a, it may not be a discussion that we have to have or whatever, but I think the staff has been really good about helping us understand the regulations that, that correspond with the policies that we have, and I, that's just been super helpful. And, I mean, we know it's a ton of work for you guys to do it all, but for me, as a board member, trying to constantly learn and stay on top of things, having access to it has been very important, and it's helped a lot. But, but I'm, that's the only thing I wanted to say in relation to having a regulation. I hear what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying, though. I'm not saying we shouldn't have access. I'm saying we should be changing it.
But hey, it, it does help to have access and to read them. I'm not as aggrieved as Maya over the last-minute change, but, but I do agree that it's something we probably should talk about at the, the retreat, in terms of like when things should be done and timing.
Well, I'm sorry, now that you bring up the regulation thing, I mean, we do, we are policy people, like, that's what we vote on, policy. So what is the proper way to go about having a regulation changed as far as with respect to the superintendent's position and what we hired him to do? Should we then say, hey, we would like to add in these five words? You know, is that the respectful thing to do, or do we just do it ourselves? Because, again, I was taught that we do policy and not regs, although I think this is a good change, but I also don't want to go stepping on my superintendent's toes unless we dancing.
Dr. Taylor?
So the board actually has a handful of regulations per code that you, you have to maintain, but they are directed by code. The overwhelming amount of your policy manual is just that, what Ms. Healy said. It's, it is congruent with state law and then adapted on occasion to meet the needs of your locality. I have the obligation of making sure that regulations align directly with your policy. So not being out of step, or I should say, being out of step with your policy is not acceptable. So guidance from the board regularly when you do pass a policy is helpful in, in helping to stay a little bit more in step in. to stay a little bit more in step in a lot of cases, and I'm just even thinking recently on a couple of things that we've done with professional conduct and whatnot, we've even used parallel language between the policy and the regulation so that we are in step and we're making sure that we're, we're following the board's intent. It, it is helpful from, for, at least from a very cursory level for the board to at least review regulation when a policy comes before and, and to share some recommendations, and our Governance Committee has never shied away from making recommendations on anything. So that, that's, that's a real benefit, but I, I think that we've got an open door to what the board really wants to see in their regulation, and I think that we want to, we want to be in step with the board's intent with their policy.
Cast your vote.
There we go.
I wasn't on mic, it's my fault, sorry. Tally the vote, vote passes seven zero. Action item nine point zero-two, authorization for school boards, appointed delegate and alternate delegate Dr. Sarah Chase and Dr. Elizabeth Warner to vote in favor or against proposed amendments to the V S B A legislative positions during the annual V S B A convention on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion?
Motion to support the recommendations, the legislative recommendations from V S B A.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any conversations, questions, or concerns?
Does anybody want me to give you the four proposed and amended, or you just, everybody's already read them and is okay with them?
Is everyone good?
Yeah, we kind of, we also agreed to give them a government.
We did.
Great, terrific.
Okay, so cast your vote. Tally the vote, motion passes seven zero, thank you. Award of a contract in the amount of two thou, two hundred thousand, two hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred to train for the replacement of the heating and cooling unit located on the roof at Drew Middle School using twenty twenty-three V P S A funds. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any comments, questions, or concerns? I understand this is a, this came to action, Ms. Sigmund asked, this came to action because it was not budgeted, so does anybody have any questions? Dr. Chase?
Where will the money come from?
Yes, Dr. Chase, the, we have some funds remaining from the generator replacement project at Drew, we had budgeted, I believe it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we have a little over...
It was seven sixty.
Yeah, so those funds were more than sufficient, thankfully, so we've got a little bit of extra there that we're, we think is definitely worthwhile going into this unit.
So are you telling me that you have two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars left from that seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, or are you saying there are other funds as well?
They're, the exact breakout, I believe we had more than two eighteen left, so I, I can get, I can get that to you subsequently if you'd like, but yes, we had, the vast majority of it is coming from that project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any comments, questions? Maureen? Oh, sorry, Ms. Sigmund?
That's fine. If the, our budget had been approved with a, you know, thirteen million dollar contingency reserve fund for capital expenses, is this the type of expense that would have been used, covered by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote, motion passes seven zero. Nine point oh-four, deferral of the implementation of the proposed new twenty-four, twenty-five high school academies, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? Ms. Holstead?
So, to be clear, we're voting to not start these, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
Correct.
We're approving, not approving.
We're approving deferral, but we have no pickup date for it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since I brought this motion, would it be all right for me to speak to it?
Sure.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to take a couple of field trips this month, I went with Ms. Sigmund to visit the academies of Loudon, and I went with Dr. Taylor and many others to visit the academies in Hampton, and I was really very impressed. I think it's, it's, looks great, but I think next fall is too soon. First, during both visits, I heard how important it is to engage your funding body at the very start of this process. We have yet to discuss this academies program with the Board of Supervisors. In fact, we did not invite any of them to go with us to visit Hampton. I think this was definitely a mistake. Secondly, we have changed a lot of things between last year and this, we implemented back-to-base for the special education programs, we changed the middle school schedule, we reduced the time between the start of academic tiers, we began having students in specialty programs like C G S and Stat transfer to the school hosting the program instead of traveling in the middle of the day. Many of these changes have stressed our transportation system. We still have students who were grandfathered, traveling in the middle of the day, or traveling to a school outside their attendant zone for special education. And we also have students traveling outside their attendant zone at the start and end of each day. As a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, what I am hearing from bus drivers and dispatchers is they can't take anymore. Thirdly, we have a lot of students in grades two through eight who are struggling with reading and mathematics. Because high school starts first, they are less likely to be impacted by traffic or transportation delays, but the delays roll forward to elementary and middle school. At the P T A and P T O forum, we heard a lot of complaints about late buses from elementary and middle school representatives, we heard none from high school. And during our work session, we saw some troubling academic performance data. We are looking at implementing a high-impact tutoring plan with three years of funding. This plan assumes we will need to provide some of these students with transportation before and after school for tutoring. Finally, the board was told that we would offset the costs of the academies by consolidating the I B program to just Mountain View and consolidating C G S sites. In addition, health sciences and Stat programs at North Stafford High School will be moved to other high schools. However, we have done nothing to solicit feedback from the community about these changes, despite a majority of this board requesting town halls to hear people's thoughts and concerns. Many of the students attending North Stafford and Brook Point may have to make a difficult, sorry, a difficult choice, participate in the academy but not participate in extracurricular activities, or go to their homeschool and participate in extracurricular activities. And this is because they may not have parents who can provide the transportation for them to participate in extracurricular activities. So those are my concerns.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Sigmund?
I'd like to echo that, and Ms. Denham actually said, you know, her fourth grader is really interested in this, and I've said this in, in our sessions, I'm really uncertain about, you know, throwing my seventh grader into the mix for this, but my fifth grader, I think, would love it. And I agree that we have asked parents what they want as far as academies, we've gotten incredible feedback, I love the curriculum we have mapped out, I have no doubt that our teachers and our staff can deliver it, as long as we can provide them what they need, and I don't know that we can't, I don't know that we have the space, I don't know that we have the staffing, I don't know that we have the buses, I don't know that we have the resources to give them the tools they need to implement a program that is awesome on paper and that we want to be awesome for our kids, and that I just don't know that we can deliver appropriately, and I want it to succeed, and I don't want it to kind of get to start and have it be disappointing because we aren't able to do what we wanted to do. I kind of see it the way we all thought that the middle school program was going to work with all these awesome electives, and then we couldn't get people to teach them, and then here we are, three years later, with, you know, a fraction of the electives we had at the middle school level, still struggling to staff them. The kids love them, but it's certainly not the vision we had in twenty nineteen, and I know a lot has changed since twenty nineteen as far as what our kids have been through, so that's a concern for me. Originally, when we started talking about this, I thought that I, honestly, I thought we would do it at the same time we opened High School Six, because then we'd have a little more space in our schools to accommodate the moving numbers, because we don't know which programs will be more or less popular as far as space. I would also approve it for twenty twenty-five, if not waiting, you know, twenty twenty-six is still pretty far off, I just think twenty twenty-four is a little close for a lot of the changes that have to happen.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, so I, I just want to go on and just say that, I mean, I could probably sit down here too and list a hundred things that could go wrong with a hundred thousand things that we do every day either, you know, as well, but it's also interesting, the experience that I got from Hampton Roads appears to be a little bit different, like, we can debate all day whether our kids are ready for this or not, but each and every one of those kids that I spoke to, their increased level of expectation that's been placed on them has caused them to be actively way more engaged, they almost never miss school because they love coming, really just to their academy classes even at that point, but, but their excitement for their academy classes is really building their confidence and getting them into wanting to be in school and learn more math and have more English and do those things because they know that's going to make them successful in, in their academy trend. I think our kids deserve this opportunity sooner rather than later, I think they've been through enough and that's why they deserve this opportunity, and I personally have enough faith in our staff to recognize that they've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is to include anticipating some of the walls that we're going to come up against. I also think it is time for us to place a heavy burden on the Board of Supervisors to step up and bring our school system into the twenty-first century with academy-based models. By deferring another vote, kicking the can down the road, we give them way more options to lazily sit back and not fund this school system, or express to them the amount of importance and the faith that we have in our system and our kids, and they should have that same amount of faith. I think this is being talked about since I got on this board, I don't believe that there has been a lack of transparency, I can't speak from the perspective of how everyone feels about it, but I also know that there's a good deal of people who don't even look at the stuff that's sent to them, or that comes across their table, or, or even whatever, but Mr. Green spoke to it today, he is not incorrect. The Stafford County school system has a beautiful opportunity here and people waiting for them when they graduate to give them a job, and we're just going to push them off again because we don't have control over all the circumstances. I literally have spent a lifetime trying to let go of the things I can't control, control the things I can, but focus more specifically on the fact that Stafford County has hired some of the brightest people and the brightest minds I've seen. And this board together, if we can't advocate to implement an academy with our Board of Supervisors and get them on board, that tells me a lot about where we stand, or where this school system stands, and that should trouble parents across the board.
Thank you. Dr. Warner?
So I was on Team Defer for a long time, but then I started thinking about the timeline. We are nine months from the start of the next school year, and originally, I felt like it was kind of like we were building the plane while we were flying it, but the fact is, we still have nine months before liftoff. So the other part of this is, academy models have been around for about fifty years. The first one opened in Philadelphia in nineteen sixty-nine, and I know that because I've been doing a tremendous amount of reading. One of the things that the academy model does is it creates a school within a school, so it increases the student's ability for support and engagement by creating smaller cohorts of classes, but also it kind of loops them through the same teachers, so they have this support network. It decreases absenteeism, it increases on-time graduation rates, and it increases academic completion, so even on the coursework. So the most, the students that benefit the most, though, this was the part that really got me, were the students at highest risk, the students that we are trying to reach. That, honey, is what's important, and I'm afraid that if we wait another year, it's not not a one year, it's almost two years, because it's nine months till we start, and it's twenty-one months until if we wait. There's only about three hundred students, two to three hundred students in the first cohort, we are not starting this all at once. I have decided to support this because I absolutely believe that the benefits far outweigh the risks, and I think that there is nothing that you enter into in life that isn't confronted with risk. These academies, we're probably going to have to tweak them, we're probably going to have to evaluate them, and we're probably going to have to consider how we do things. But I absolutely think that those eighth graders that are struggling will do better in a smaller cohort where they maybe have better academic supports than if we continue the standard. One of the things that I read that was really interesting, it says that our task is to create students that are both college-ready or college and career-ready. But really, what we can do is we create students that are either college-ready or career-ready. These programs also improve our C T E programs by making them more robust and more complete. So I will not vote to defer, I am voting in favor.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Ms. Guy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to defer, I'm going to speak for the marginalized, because I am the one that's marginalized up here, and I'm telling you, we don't have another year for you guys to keep talking about the same thing we've been talking about for years, we don't have that time. We are ready to do things, you know, when I first moved here in oh-seven, I went to my first school board meeting in oh-eight, and Stafford school board members were talking about Stafford's the leader of this and we're the innovator in that, that was the terms that we used, because I can't remember the things that we were doing great, but we were doing something great because the school board members were saying it and I believed it, and I don't know where the innovation and the leadership has gone, but it's not here right now. We aren't innovating in things and we can. Dr. Taylor has brought some amazing people on to do this, I trust them, I believe in them, and if they screw up, I'm gonna call them out, and so are you, and that's their job, that's what we pay them for, right? So let's have some confidence in our staff that hasn't necessarily failed us yet, you know, and it's, you know, it's, it's our job to, to make these high votes or whatever, but it's also their job to, to get stuff done, and I feel like, I feel like we're just constantly stepping on their toes, I feel like we don't respect the years of service that they have. I feel like we're leading with our egos a little bit too much up here, respectfully, you guys, I'm sorry. I, and I don't like it and I don't enjoy watching it, I want to let the superintendent superintendent, I want to let the staff be staffy and, and you know, I want them to, to guide us, and then we make our decision and then they do their thing, and I just, I don't want to go below what we're supposed to be going, you know, above. So we're ready for this, the community's ready for this. Yes, I did hear one person from, I believe she is from Aquia spoke out and wanted to defer, but I've heard more people be positive about this and are exciting about this, excited about this than I have heard, except from you guys. And, and I'm, I'm just, I'm ready for it, I, I don't understand, it's just a few hundred kids, I will speak to the fact that my child, I, I don't know if this was everyone in middle school at the time, but my son, who's graduated college by now, but when he was at Shirley Heim, every class he had was the same kids, and that was the best experience just as a mom, because if I knew one other parent in one of his classes, I had everything, I knew everything they did in math, everything they missed in English, like if he was sick or if he skipped or, or whatever, and it was so easy, and it was easy for him to get homework help or to just, you know, engage with those kids, because you were with the same people. I think this is the way to go, I absolutely refuse to defer, although I will respect the will of the board, but I, I think the community is ready for us to do some stuff.
Ms. Healy?
Well, I can count, so I, I know this is going to go forward, I think it's a good thing. I support the academies, but I tend to be more cautious and slow-moving on, in a lot of things, and, and I have, you know, I, I, I felt that we need to do a little more work on it, and that not, this is not a reflection on Dr. Taylor, because you have amazing experience and vision, and you come to us, you know, with, with a much broader view than, certainly than, than I have, you know, being in Stafford for, for decades. But in, in something like this, you've made a lot of changes at the request of the board, and, and I, I applaud that, but I also question what changes would possibly be able to be made if the community had had a chance to, to weigh in. You know, if we had engaged parents or, or staff, I, I imagine staff informally through the central office, but I haven't heard of anything, you know, going directly, you know, to the staff for, for their input, and I, and I, you know, applaud their, the board members who have... applaud their, the Board members who have asked these questions and made suggestions and and actually changed, you know, some of these programs. But I don't feel that, you know, we know it all. And and that that's what I would, you know, I would say, if it were to be deferred, which I see that it's not, what I would want would be to get, you know, a a broader view and more input from the community. And perhaps we can somehow weave this in as we go along, because I know we're going to start out just with the ninth graders, and it's not, you know, it's not like full-blown four years. But I but I would like to see that as part of the process, because I I think that our community is amazing, and they have so much to offer, and and they can only make it better. So I support the, you know, the the academies, but I'm going to vote in the minority this time for the deferral, because I, you know, that's that's what I think, you know, is is the best thing for now.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. When my youngest, who is now a sophomore in college, was in seventh grade, I had just come off of working with CIPs and asked about, why does Stafford not have a CTE center? And so I went on a little expedition of my own to find out who has them and who does not, and if you do not, what do you do? And when I did that, my sister, who had three kids in Prince William County, said, come look here. So I went to Colgan High School, and I spent the day with their principal, and I learned about, well, I learned about leadership of a building, because I was also seeking information about that, but also about the, how they did their different academies or learning centers up there. He spent the whole day with me. I was so excited. I looked into Fairfax, and I saw how they did their academies. I did go by myself to visit Loudon at the beginning of October, and then I also, yes, and then I also went to Hampton City to see that. In addition, Ms., or Dr. Warner and I went to a V SBA thing this summer, and we got to hear how it's done in Albemarle. And so, quite frankly, there isn't a one-size-fits-all. As a matter of fact, the the School Board Chair for Hampton City said they got, they send all their new Board members to Nashville, because Nashville was where it started for them. I want to go, so if anyone wants to go on a road trip, let's go. But anyways, I feel like this was something that I brought up to the then person in charge of high schools, and I was assured, we are already doing, we are already getting ready to do this. And that was when my son was in seventh grade. I then waited till I was on the Board, before I got on the Board, and talked to the superintendent and said, I would love this. What are your thoughts? Totally on board. Sadly, a pandemic came five meetings into my term. I, two years ago, when we brought Dr. Taylor on, I cornered him at V SBA with two pages of questions, and this was one of them. So for me, I feel like the wait has already been there. The work has been done in other places, and we just, I I'm excited to have something like this roll out, because I have a sophomore in college, and I would have loved for him to have had an opportunity like this, with what I had to go through to get him through high school. So I just think that, you know, I'm I'm trusting the process. I'm also trusting that it's okay to fall and fail, because that's what we're teaching our kids too, and I, and that we just, you know, you fall down five times, and it's that the fact that you got up six. We're going, we're going to figure this out. I feel like staff has put in the work. It's even to to the level of communications. They have the information, and they have the excitement, and they have the understanding. So I just feel like this is a very, I've spoke with the teachers in the high school, I've spoke with administrators in high school, because I just was, I'm curious. I want to know, where are you? How are you? So I feel like this is, this is the time, and I'm not, I'm not ready to defer anymore. I'm excited that we're, we we have these options. I'm even excited because I got to go to the the Career Fair for the fifth graders of Grafton Village at the airport, to see people of all, women and men, standing there, like this one gentleman said, we make between 125 and 250. And the kid said, oh, my God, that's not much. And I looked at the kid, and I said, that's 125,000 to 250,000. He thought it was dollars and cents. So, but I just feel like, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of good things around us, and we've got a lot of amazing staff with some awesome skills. And I just, I feel like our kids are ready, and I'm I'm ready. So if there's anything else, Dr. Taylor, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that this is, this is no small thing. So the Board has has considered this for for some time, and that's a good thing, that that this is just one part of a of a bigger piece to our approach to high school. There's a huge component in here that's actually may even be more significant in the program of study than than the specialty centers, and that's the expansion of career and technical education programs. That may actually be even more significant than some of the things that we have here in terms of reorganizing some of our courses. I will add that, Ms. Denham, you're going to be thrilled when you take a look at the document in terms of middle school, because we do have all the language programs in there. I know it's not clear in the summary sheet, but thank you so much for for that feedback. And I think feedback is something that's critically important. And where we started and where we are today is a mechanism of feedback, and every single person on this dais, along with really countless other people in this community, have had their hands in this. I feel pretty good about that. I think that one way to look at this is that this is the beginning of a journey, not the end or even the middle. And so there is opportunity for a lot of community enhancement and community refinement. The way that this is designed and set up is that we would not interrupt any student's pathway that's already in existence, and that we're just adding new pathways for new cohorts of kids. And with that, that does give us an opportunity to to pivot and adjust as we need to. So it's no small thing. I think that the Board has been crystal clear about its expectations for excellence, crystal clear about its expectations for providing meaningful post-secondary outcomes to young people. And you have high expectations, not just for our children to perform better, but also for our staff to deliver, and they all heard you tonight. So I think that we're uniquely positioned to do some really exciting things, to reengage our kids, to bring them back into the fold in a really meaningful way, and enhance their experience, but prepare them for a really enriching life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So the motion is to defer the implementation of the proposed new 24-25 high school academies. Cast your vote.
Motion fails. Dr. Warner, Susan Randall, Maya Guy, Alyssa Halsted, all vote no. Next up is 9.05, adoption of the proposed 24-25 program of studies for grades K through 12. Can I get a motion? Sure.
So that means they're going to go ahead and do it, right?
We have to vote, if we don't vote on this next one.
The program of studies first.
Yes.
See, it rubbed off. She, her confusion.
Good questions, ladies, good questions.
Motion to accept a program of study.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Dr. Chase?
Dr. Taylor, if we approve this, are we approving the middle school schedule as it is currently planned?
Yes. And I'm glad that that was brought up as well. There was a lot of engagement with the the middle school schedule, and granted, principals were at the center of that, something that was very important that this Board had asked about, was, you know, are we meeting requirements, and are we adjusting adequately? This is a a very noble question to ask, particularly as we've just reviewed some of our performance data and saw how possibly making some changes maybe didn't necessarily yield us the kind of results that we were looking for. We feel pretty confident in this, knowing full well that there is no perfect schedule, and that there is no perfect solution to to middle school. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
No, go ahead, Maya. I'll I'll talk long. Maya, so Maureen has to talk too.
Okay. Ms. Halsted?
Just going back to middle school, because I I want to make sure that I understand also, right? So we originally proposed, now I, we can talk X-Y schedules all day long, and I get them, but I don't get them. I'm still a girl at heart that just wants the same classes every day, and just give us our time, math, science, social studies, English, elective, gym, five days a week. So the whole X-Y thing, it will remain a mystery to me. But I need to feel comfortable that our science and social studies kids, those that might grow up to be scientists, physicists, whatever they might be, and again, I was a science kid in school, so I just want to make sure, the 68 minutes that they have now is up eight minutes from the original proposed.
Yes.
Okay. But there still remains one day where it's only a 60-minute block of instruction. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how does it compare to this year's time?
So it's, it's definitely a reduction in time for, basically, there's two classes that would get an increase in time, your language, English Language Arts and your Mathematics, that was a priority for the Board, that's a priority for our middle schools. They recognize that, too, as it's a critical driver of their academic performance, for sure. This, the schedule that we started with, that we had originally proposed, is commonly referred to as a 660, so six periods of 60 minutes, 30-minute lunch. We made some modifications to that, because we also had a flex period that was built in, that met every single day. One of the ways that we could add additional time to world language, elective, science, and social studies was by reducing that flex period to just once a week. And so that accounts for how there's one day a week that is still the 60-minute periods with the with the extra flex period in the day versus the other four days of the week, which are alternate, would have also longer, longer periods to 68 minutes to accommodate for that.
So how many, how many days, like in a month, are we getting science and social studies?
You're adding just a few days extra to science and social studies net positive.
Okay.
I I would say that even though seat time is a requirement, and we exceed the seat time requirements established by the Virginia Department of Education, we exceed them.
Can you, can you get those numbers to us?
Sure. The four core areas combined should equal, I think it's 5, 560, if I'm not mistaken, 560. And the the Virginia Department of Education acknowledges that you may not necessarily want to divide them equally, because you may have other pressing priorities, like ELA and math. And so we exceed that requirement, and we meet that requirement. We also meet the 990 hours requirement for K through 8 instruction. So seat time is not the question. I think probably the broader question is, how do we use that time? And what would be the most efficient use of our time? I think the Board made some really great suggestions and some great feedback, and we modified the schedule accordingly, so that we could add a little bit more time and prioritize the the academic side of the schedule. And I think we, knowing that there's no perfect schedule, we've hit the the mark as best as we can under the circumstances.
So then my last question is, can we assure people this is our last change?
No.
No, 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 that's not what I mean. That's not what I mean. No, 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 that's not what I mean, that we're going to give this some time to play out, vice next year, changing the middle school schedule again, with no verification of the efficacy of anything we've done now.
Yeah, so I think you bring up a really important point, and and I think that there's a couple of things that are different about this approach that I think matter. One is the the principals and staff that that reviewed this and worked on the schedule at all levels had some really fundamental questions that they had to answer about the structure of middle school, the purpose of middle school, why we even have middle school, what we hope to get accomplished during middle school, as as really guiding questions. And then we benchmarked that, working with ASCD National, a representative, which is a, an organization for a curriculum supervision and school administration, school leadership, to really kind of guide our work to make sure that we were building a schedule that was aligned to to what our needs are. And this seemed to to check the most boxes.
Ms. Sigman, sorry.
So I didn't want to give my colleagues up here, you know, agita, as my grandmother would have said, but I was this close to doing a substitute motion and passing this whole thing, with the exception of this middle school schedule. I hear that we have been changing it all the time. I've talked to some building admin as well, and, you know, the feedback I get is, we'll support whatever you put in. And I know they will, and they'll do a great job at it. But I am not getting the sense that what we are gaining with the new schedule is worth what we're giving up with the, by switching to the new schedule. We, the Board, got a really great summary from one of our instructors, that I wanted to share some of the facts, that he he had done the math for us. It is nearly 16 hours of lost instructional time, which is the equivalent of like 13 days, that we are taking from our science and civics or social studies. So they will have to redo, reduce the content. It also means less planning time. Losing the flex time on Monday to Thursday, that is where our students do get our enrichment time, their ZAP, which is the getting rid of their zeros when they're missing work, or they're just in time, so they don't fall further behind, particularly if your kid's out sick, they might pull your kid in during that time to give them time to catch up, or to get, miss the, to catch up on the instruction that they they missed, or if they just need extra support to get over that, you know, that tough unit in math or whatever. So having only one day to remediate on Fridays, he also pointed out that when we have one class on a Friday that's 60 minutes, that Friday is going to be X-day some weeks, Y-day some weeks, but for the other class, like it's hard to, it's kind of clunky to have a 68-minute class on X-day, and then a 60-minute class on the Y-day that week. And then it would flip the next time. So it's a lot. And I know that our current schedule is clunky, because we have the regular block and the skinny block, and that's what we were trying to correct. But if we're going from one brand of clunky to another brand of clunky, do we at least gain some efficiency by not changing the schedule at all, and allowing it to play out one more year, to see if we can come up with a better solution, or how to restructure that? Also, the thing that solidified it for me is, we did just get these things, and this is the combined rates, division, combined passing rates by subject area, so all the ones. And these two shorter ones are science and social studies. So we are, you know, we're seeing improvements across all areas, but are still, our lowest scores are in the two sections where we're looking at reducing our instructional time by 16 hours. So I'm not super comfortable with that. So that's where, and I do love that we added back electives. I am super, super excited about the developments we've made there and retaining some of our foreign languages. It's just this time here in these classes, particularly because these are both SOL classes, that is important for me to try to preserve.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, if I could just add?
Yep, yep.
This is the struggle of schedules, and you can't have both. So it is a challenge, because as a Board, you have to consider, do you, do you want the elective offerings, or do you want equality of core instructional time? Because you cannot have both. It is really just that. It is a choice. So it is prioritizing which matters most to you. This is the recommendation from all of our principals, that they worked on together, that they are the ones proposing. It's not the schedule Thomas would have come up with. It's probably not the schedule that Michael or Jim or Stacy would have come up with, but... Michael or Jim or Stacy would have come up with, but it is the schedule that they feel like can accomplish the majority of their goals and also stay true to what some of the things that the board has indicated that they wanted.
Dr. Warner?
I think one of the problems with middle school is we have not been consistent. So, I think that we need to stick with something and see where the results take us. But I also think that we have to do all things at the same time. We have high school students that are falling through the cracks, we have high school students that are losing interest in even being in school, their attendance is in the, they're not attending, they're not graduating, they're not getting the things they need. This type of school within a school philosophy has kind of demonstrated that those students do best and those are the things that we also need to do. So, we need to focus on K through 8 and we need to get the middle school schedule figured out. We need to make sure our elementary school students are on pace so that they, when they get to middle school, they aren't already behind. But we also need to make sure that our high school students are getting the opportunities that they need so that they can excel as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. I wanted to just add that I get the whole thing about middle school being changed. I had three kids, nine years, it was done nine different ways and during their entire time. I did speak with some teachers when they originally saw what we were putting forward with the instructional, even less instructional time in science and social studies, they were absolutely opposed to it. So, when this came out, they were like, wow, you actually listened to us. So, I did hear from teachers that were happy with this. They, teachers that I spoke to are not totally in favor of flex time and the elective choice, and so much elective choices, so that's from the teachers I've spoken with. But also, there were some English language issues, there is currently English language learner issues with the skinny and the long block in trying to get classes in for them to make sure that they are, that they have, what they try to do is give them vocabulary in, ahead of time for upcoming lessons. And that has not been a possible, completely possible this year with the skinny and the long block because they couldn't figure out how to get everything that they need in there. So, I, in taking this back and asking the administrators that I spoke with and teachers that I spoke with, this was, you know, not to everyone's loving, like you say, you know, you either get this or you get that, you don't get everything. But this was definitely a solution, a better solution forward than last year's schedule and the first proposed schedule is the messaging I heard. So, motions on the floor to adopt the proposed 24-25 program of studies for grades K through 12. Is there any more comments, questions, or concerns? Cast your vote.
Tally the vote. Motion passes. Dr. Chase and Ms. Sigmund are no. Moving on to superintendent comments, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of comments this evening. This is certainly a time of Thanksgiving and I, for one, am thankful for the opportunity to serve Stafford County and thank you for having me as your superintendent. I recently celebrated my second anniversary in Stafford County Public Schools and I'm very excited about some of the things that we have going on. I fully register some of the concerns that the board has raised and you're doing your job well in making sure that we are doing due diligence, so thank you for that. During this time of Thanksgiving, it's important to remember that not everybody in our community has what they need, particularly during next week's Thanksgiving holiday. We'll be out of session on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday as families around our community celebrate Thanksgiving. We'll be putting a lot of information in our next Elevate Weekly about accessing some resources to combat food insecurity in our community. Recently, our students held a big fundraiser for the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, band together to fight hunger. This was almost a record year for raising funds to support a very worthy cause, but there are a lot of families in need in Stafford County and we hope that people are mindful of this and are able to access some of the resources that we have. This is just such a wonderful community, there are so many fantastic programs that we offer our children and I'm very excited about what the future brings, beginning tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, we invite our eighth grade families to participate in our Pathways Night. And since the board adopted our program of study, you'll start to see brochures like this, which are our guide to some of our career and technical education programs and some of the specialty center program offerings that we have. We encourage parents to ask a lot of questions, to be engaged, and to please reach out as we welcome your students into a really engaging high school experience of the future. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Okay, moving on to board member comments, Ms. Halsted?
Wow, that was really fast. So, I'm gonna just keep mine to probably stuff we really haven't talked about a little bit, but I also want to say that if, when you read this and you get it, they came up with really cool acronym names for the stuff, so I'm pretty excited that there's things like Epic and Leap and anytime you can make an acronym with the things, I'm very excited about it. It comes from working for the government for a long time and we like to make, you know, names, so I'm super excited about that. I actually want to talk just about a couple of things as we do look towards, you know, these next two months of school before the year, but I want to talk a little bit again about social media and the impact that it's having on our kids and I bring it up for several reasons, but recently someone that I respect very much and had a conversation said to me that we seem to spend a lot of time talking about parent rights, but we never talk about parent responsibilities. So, those are very, very, very big topics that I think we all need to focus on as a board because there are a lot of things that we are missing in our society today and I think accountability is a huge piece of that. Social media is bleeding into our schools, so are a lot of other things, but social media is really impacting our kids, I think, in ways that it's becoming difficult to watch. And so, we see our kids up here today getting their anti-bully awards and stuff like that and the bully prevention program things and then I see some of the ways that going, that parents are behaving online, I've spoke about this before. Certainly, I think it's important that not only do we talk to our kids about their behavior and their use of social media and how it's impacting maybe their self-esteem or maybe their ability to get good grades or to wannabe, whatever, but also, I'm going to ask parents to reflect for a minute on their behavior on social media. I am not an innocent party in this, I certainly have engaged in the battle royale, I try not to do it in the last couple of years, just choosing now to really pick my battles a little bit better and recognize that I can be a keyboard warrior all day, but if I don't bring my mouth to the game, then it's only hurting people, not helping them. So, I'm really going to ask parents as we walk into the season of, you know, I'm a big fan of the season of miracles and hope and everything that winter and Christmas brings, I just want to ask our parents to take a minute to reflect and really take a look at whether their behavior is helping their kids or hurting their chances because I believe that we need to start making a true difference. And I'm sorry that our, oh my God, I can't think of her name, Jenny, the one that will be our backup, she's, no, it was our actual girl, right? Yeah, but who's the, what's the first one?
Jolene.
Jolene, okay, so when I spoke to her yesterday at the student government meeting, she said that her big goal was community and to build a bigger community for the kids and I was, like I almost jumped up and hugged her, but I didn't know if that was appropriate or not because what a great way to start, right? What a great just focus to have for our kids, but I felt also a little bit sad because sometimes our community is focused on social media, which is, or focused around the social media, which the negativity is just pervasive. So, I can't wait for her to get on board so we can start to look at ways to help her build community in the 3D world outside. And I definitely hope that we look to find a way to have a debate between parent right and parent responsibility and I hope that we have parents really reflect on what that means and how their behavior impacts their child's behavior. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Ms. Guy?
Yes, ma'am.
I do, I tried to keep you on your toes.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't ready, I did not prepare, but I too am a keyboard wor- no, I'm just joking, I don't do that. I spend my time on social media liking my own comments because if I don't like myself, who will? No, really, that's what you should do. I'm a positive person. I love that she, Jolene, was talking about building a community because I will have to say, I have seen so much vitriol on social media and it's worried me too and I see the kids at the bus stop and, you know, like they're starting to get, you know, funky under their pits, but they're also like funky in their head and the stuff they're saying. I also get it that, you know, it's cool for kids to use improper language, they just do it just to be cool, you know what I mean? Like they don't really mean it, but they're, yeah, they're not acting as kind, so I will co-sign on your point of us parents just trying to model the best behavior that we can for our children and to do it in social media and also just, also just for our staff, just, I just need to let you guys know just how much I appreciate, even though there's only like two of you here, but I just appreciate you guys so much and all the work you do, the long hours. I had no idea that the IT people sometimes worked overnight until that, like that's crazy and I appreciate it, but like are we making them do, I mean, that's just, I would get fired, I would absolutely get fired, I wouldn't do that. I do the job in the morning, but I wouldn't do it overnight and I just, I really appreciate staff and I didn't prepare my comments, you know, I love everybody and if anyone needs me, you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Ms. Healy?
Okay, I want to thank the Stafford Education Foundation for their financial support of the anti-bullying campaign. I think it encourages our students to participate and I love the fact that we recognize it here. It's so important and we've said we're not going to have this just be an October thing, this is an all-year anti-bullying, so I appreciate everybody that participated and I think we're all winners from the kids working on that. I'm looking forward to our meeting with the Board of Supervisors on the Capitol Improvement Plan. I don't think we have a date yet, but, you know, stay tuned and I'm glad that we'll all be able to participate hopefully and maybe have a productive conversation. And also wanted to ask the board to consider recognizing Mr. Cohen for his support of the schools during his service on the Board of Supervisors. In the past, the Board of Supervisors has recognized school board members who have, you know, served in the community here and I, and we've never done this before, but I don't recall we've, you know, had the occasion. And I think that would be fitting because Mr. Cohen has done a lot to help the schools and the Stafford community as well during his term on the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, I don't know if we can maybe let the chair know, it's something we could try to put on the next agenda if the board is interested because we can look back, I recall, you know, one board member in particular, and I think they've done it on other occasions that they have recognized, you know, in their meeting, you know, with a certificate of recognition. And the last thing I want to do is, and I know we can't talk politics here and it's not really politics, but I want to thank the people on the Rock Hill for letting me come back. Yeah, well, I always say I'm not, I'm not political except when I have to ask for a vote and we're, the votes are done, we're not asking for anything, but it is, it is a privilege to be on this board, it is challenging, but it's a privilege and Rock Hill has been very gracious in allowing me to represent that district for a long time and I will start my 25th year on January 1st. I know, I'm definitely a survivor, but anyway, thank you to Rock Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so first, I would like to thank the supervisors for appropriating the funds for our teacher and staff salary increases. We often sit up here and throw shots at the supervisors, but we sometimes forget that we do need them and they sometimes do come through, so that's great. I also want to just extend my sympathy to the family of Patricia Mancini, Patricia Mancini, our former school board member for the George Washington District and she died about a week and a half ago and I think we're going to recognize her at the next meeting, so I'm happy to do that. It's been a busy month, I helped out at Pumpkin Days at Rising Star. It was really fun to spend some time with our youngest learners. I went to Dixon Smith's Community Day and served as a judge for the chili cook-off. There's some great chefs at Dixon Smith, I didn't get sick or anything after doing that, so that was great. And then I had the privilege to attend the first ever Veterans Day brunch at Stafford High School. I sat with Ray, a Marine Corps vet from Vietnam, who has a granddaughter at Stafford High School, and Zachary, a Marine Corps vet from Afghanistan, who has two children at Stafford High School. And as I read the reports about events in Israel and Gaza, I cannot help but be thankful for the protection that our military service members provide us with. And then, lastly, piggybacking off of what Ms. Halsted said, it really, we really do need parents to be involved and we really need our teachers to communicate truthfully about just how much help those students need who are in our priority one area and get those parents involved, because I know people love their children, but they don't always know what they can do to help. And if they understand the direness of the situation, they will probably do a lot more work to get their children to school every day. And so, I really think we need to pull that in. All right, thank you.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, I appreciate that they appropriated the funds that the governor said we could have. But I also do look forward to looking, working with the Board of Supervisors, we need to build those relationships because we have a lot of needs in this community and I think that we need to be clear and articulate what it is we need and what it is we want and I hope that we can continue to get community support for that. I'm glad Dr. Chase enjoyed Pumpkin Days, it's one of my favorite events at Rising Star, I generally do both days because I really like, it's quite a joy to watch the young learners have so much fun. I look forward to getting back in the schools, it's been busy the last couple of months and I have not been able to do as much as I would like and I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Ms. Sigmund?
I too have had a super busy month in addition to going to Loudon Academies with Dr. Chase, nobody else has said it, we had the groundbreaking for High School 6. I am so excited that, this is actually my second groundbreaking since being on the board, because we put in our, well, third, I guess, two turf fields plus the high school and many, many more to come and all sorts of projects, so I'm very excited about that. Also, I've done something I never thought I would ever do, I was invited to the egg drop, to watch the egg drop at Anthony Burns for their science, they, you know, kids build from their Makerspace, a container of something, how to get the egg taken up in the bucket on a fire truck and then dropped and let's see who's worked and who didn't. I invited Dr. Young to join us because, you know, it is a partnership with the first responders and the kids just love it, it's just great energy. Well, Dr. Young invited me to go up in the fire truck bucket about 100 feet above my neighborhood and I got to throw these projects out the bucket and watch them, well, I couldn't really look over, thank God. But there's drone footage of us up there, I could see my house from there, it was fantastic and I would never have done that on my own, so I appreciate the peer pressure to make me, make me do it and I did it with a teacher and, oh my gosh, she went up before me and lived to tell the tale, so I went ahead and did it as well. I also want to thank Ms. Butler at Park Ridge for inviting me to the unveiling of their Stafford historic mural and thanks to the Stafford Education Foundation for making that possible. If you can get over there, it's great, it's called the Stafford Patriots Past and Present and it depicts, the mural depicts four patriots from George Washington to Dr. Michael Strobel, who was played by Kevin Bacon in the movie Taking Chance, because he escorted a service member home from Afghanistan and his wife teaches.
member home from Afghanistan, and his wife teaches in our schools, she's at Margaret Brent. They also had their Veterans Day Parade, which was epically awesome, with the kids just cheering and chanting USA, and it was, it was so much fun. And then just yesterday, was it, was it yesterday, our student government luncheon? It's like all blending together, which was great. I did get to meet our student rep, our new student rep and alternate, as well as talk with a lot of our, you know, school-based elected leaders on the changes they'd like to see in our community. It's one of my favorite things to do. While I'm here, I also want to give a little bit of update from the Fab. Our student lunch debt is topping out over $275,000. It ticked up about $19,000 in the past 30 days, which is certainly better than the $50,000 jumps we were doing last year, but it is not trending in the direction we would like it to go. So please, parents, reach out to your schools. If you get a weird phone call, email, robo-text, letter in the mail saying you owe money, it's not, probably not a fluke, please just call us and check and pay it, don't just throw it out. We will be getting monthly updates on the student lunch debt this year, so I will continue to update you on those. We also talked about, since we have the transportation people here, the buses we are going to be adding to our fleet this year. Ms. Healy will be happy to know, we've got 11 buses coming in this month, November, December, and February, from our budgeted fiscal year 2024 funds, but we're also getting 18 more buses with our All-in-Virginia funds. And some of those will be activity buses, some are sped buses, some are mainstreams, some are gas, some are diesel, so we have an assortment of buses, and of course, our All-in-Virginia fund buses, we don't have an ETA on those, but we should have 11 buses early in the year. The other thing that, I had a conversation with Dr. Taylor, and we are now the fastest-growing community in the Commonwealth. The counties that were above us have had some lags in their enrollment numbers, where we are not lagging in our enrollment numbers, so I think it's like almost 2% growth, and that puts us at the very top of the list. And that means we need to be growing everywhere else at a similar or faster pace so that we can keep up. I think we're looking at, what, another 500 students next year, 600 students? So these are the numbers and the things we have to think about, and the trends were, I mean, we were what, number four or five fastest-growing before this year, and we jumped to number one in a year. So we need to really get ahead of that and keep those numbers in mind and that trend in mind when we are thinking about our budget priorities for this year and the five-year plan, because we need to move faster than they do in funding and building and staffing and all the things that we need in this community. All of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. I would also like to echo my sympathies for the passing of Mrs. Mancini. I was really fortunate, and I have been fortunate as a parent in the George Washington community that I've got to know and work with my school board members, Ed Sullivan, Ms. Mancini, Dwayne McOscar, and then myself, of course, I'm here, but honestly, I just have, she was, I do, I'm a lot, no. But I have really enjoyed working with her in the schools. She did a lot with music at Berry Farm, came to our productions, and also would actually lead some of the, like, kid plays stuff. I would also like to congratulate, congratulate Dr. Warner and Ms. Healy for returning back to the school board. I know it wasn't always easy to make the decision to come back or to even run, but I just wanted to congratulate you two. I also attended Pumpkin Day, and I'm really glad that Dr. Warner was able to share that with us. I got to be the science lead on, at one of the tables, and it just was just so fun, it reminded me, I used to run my own home daycare, and it really reminded me of those days. I've been able to, I have still been able to visit some schools, and I really appreciate the principals for giving me their time and attention, also visited Loudon. But I'm also excited about us, and I wish everybody safe travels, that are attending the SBA, and then the others that are coming down for our board retreat in Williamsburg over the next few days. But I'm so excited that we have been asked to be a presenter at the SBA with our students as we share with other state school board associations about the student voice and including them on our board. So I'm excited that we get to take Catherine, and we also get to take our new Jenny and Jolene. Rocky is like really into her college apps and classes, and so we respect that of our student leaders too, to like call out your boundaries. So I'm excited that we get to do this with them. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope if you travel, you are getting to spend time with friends and loved ones, and that you have safe travels. I have 16 coming, so, and apparently we're bringing in five more people that don't have family and friends, so what's another 20 more? If you know someone who needs a place for dinner, apparently we have plenty of room, so I would invite you to reach out if you need some help. Our school system definitely offers that. Just a reminder again, we'll be doing our school board retreat on Friday, this Friday, this Saturday. We have our school board legislative summit with our newly-elected leaders on December 5th at 5:00, and we also have our next school board meeting December 12th, with a work session beginning at 5:00 and a regular business meeting at 7:00. Have a great evening.